Okay, good morning, everyone. Very good morning. I know some of us were here late at night. The guy in the uniform and the gun, can you have a seat, please?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. We are holding a special meeting on June 4th, 2025 of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Asadrian, Bratman, Garpetian, Kasakian, Mayor Najarian.
Thank you. May we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, Special Public Meeting of the City Council, was posted on June 2nd, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what's the first item?
The first item is Budget Study Session Number Three, Public Benefits Charge Presentation, Capital Improvement Program, Fleet Parking Fees.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, good morning, Mayor Najarian, Member City Council. Thank you again for being here this morning after eight hours of me council meetings yesterday and last night. We appreciate that. Today is going to be Budget Study Session Number Three. It's gonna include five items, starting with the Public Benefit Charge Presentation and Low Carbon Fuel Standards. And then we can take a break for you all to be able to ask questions from staff, and then move on to Capital Improvements Program, our fleet fund, parking fees, and then recap of potential, we call it expense offsets, but in other words, as potential revenue generating ideas. With that, I'll turn it over to John Tuktaugian, Assistant City Manager/Acting Finance Director, to kick off today's presentation.
Thank you very much for that introduction of what we're doing today. I just wanted to go one step back, actually, and recap where we've been, where we're going today, and what the next steps of this effort would be. If you recall, we've had two budget study sessions to date. The first one really was an overview of our fiscal year 2425 general fund projections. We followed that up with a depiction of what our five-year general fund forecast looks like. We included a fiscal year 2526 proposed budget overview. And I want to stress, it was an overview, not the details, as well as the budget balancing strategies that we delved into in quite a bit of detail in Study Session Number Two. During the last meeting, which was Study Session Number Two, we took a deeper dive into the fiscal year 2526 proposed citywide budget. That included the general fund, as well as all the other funds that make up our budget. We went and provided departmental presentations through videos, as well as through profile slides for each department. We talked about specific budget reduction strategies proposed within those departments to help budget balance our 2526 general fund budget. And we held our public hearing on the vacancies and recruitments. The city manager already talked about what we're going to be discussing today. But at the end of today's effort, what we'd really like, as a group, is to get some direction in terms of where council wants these conversations to go as we begin preparing our final budget adoption staff report. Our budget adoption or budget hearing and adoption is set for June 24th. There is a couple of weeks before we get there. In order for us to be effective in this effort, we're gonna need to determine where council wants to see this. Are we gonna adopt with a deficit? Are we gonna go and make further cuts? And we'll talk about that more in detail with our last slide. I will not be doing the vast majority of talking today. You've heard more than enough from me. We're gonna start off our presentation with GWP providing a pretty in-depth analysis of their Public Benefits Charge Program. That's gonna be done in unison with a number of different staff. We're starting off with Rosanna Soloyan, Aneta Badalian will come up after that, and then Brian Salazar.
Good morning, Mayor Najarian, council members, city staff. My name is Rosanne Soloyan, Clean Energy Officer, and we will be presenting Clean Energy Programs Plan funded by the Public Benefit Charge and Low Carbon Fuel Standard. Our section designs, implements, and manages a portfolio of distributed generation and demand-side management programs and initiatives that align with GWP's mission to be our community's trusted utility. We also support GWP's vision to provide reliable, sustainable, and cost-competitive programs and services to the community. Guided by local policy direction and state-level clean energy goals, we continue to invest in innovative technologies and strategies to reduce energy consumption, greenhouse gas emissions, to secure cleaner energy future for Glendale community. This pie chart breaks down the key elements of our integrated demand-side management approach, and each slide represents a specific program area. And together, all these segments form a unified approach to reduce energy use, lower peak electricity demand, greenhouse gas emissions, enhance grid reliability while staying cost-competitive. Some of the segments require collaboration with other GWP sections and divisions. And this chart mainly focuses on our broader strategic direction we are pursuing, which is a balanced, integrated, coordinated approach to demand-side management that supports Glendale's clean energy goals. Senate Bill 1037 requires utilities to invest in four major categories to drive California's energy transition to lower energy costs and provide assistance to income-qualified customers, as well as invest in renewable energy and conduct research, development, and demonstration projects. The bill specifically designates 2.85% of electric revenues to be spent on these four major categories. And the portfolio of the plan is presented and approved by city council every two years. And we propose a fiscal year 2526 year budget of $9.3 million. And for fiscal year 2627, we propose a Public Benefit Charge-funded programs budget, $11.5 million. This table outlines the proposed PBC budget allocation across various categories for the next two years. And the largest portion of funding is allocated to providing energy bill assistance to Glendale's income-qualified customers. The previous tables provide a breakdown of expenditures and budget between various programs. I'm not going to go into details. This is just for your reference. And AB 2021 is adding to state's energy efficiency policies by requiring the establishment of 10-year forecast that utilities conduct every four years to identify energy efficiency potential and opportunities and future-saving opportunity programs. GWP's energy efficiency goal for 2026...
Can you hold on one second?
I'm sorry. Were there changes made since this was emailed? Because you're going through things that are part of the packet I had reviewed.
Yes, this is the oldest version of the presentation. We updated some of the slides and moved a couple of tables around.
But the content hasn't changed significantly?
No.
There may be slides that are different than what you had received, the sequence of the slides, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we're holding two of the packets, just by looking at it. Very different. This is the one that I reviewed before this session.
So the main change was to move those, I believe, two tables, two parking slides. And we updated a couple of numbers in those tables, but the majority of presentation stays the same.
Councilmember Satrian, what slide deck are you referring to?
One that was emailed to us.
Who emailed it to you?
Staff. I asked staff to print it yesterday. And they printed this and handed this to me. Not GWP staff, our staff.
Right. There were, sorry, there were only three slides got moved to the parking lot, and we ultimately just removed them altogether because there's a lot of information, and it didn't really add to the clarity of the presentation. And that was in the interest of time. So there should have only been those three slides removed.
So moving forward, even though there may be some last-minute editorial changes to the presentation, I'm gonna ask that we continue to go forward with this. And any issues on information that has changed or different than what we received, as opposed to the thickness of the packets, we can discuss at the conclusion of the presentation.
Sure. I'm more than willing to go through anything that was missed.
She's got a lot to go through. I'd just like her to go through it. And then we're gonna pause and ask questions from, have council ask questions or comments at that.
Sure. Thank you.
GWP's energy efficiency goal for 2026 is 1% or 10 million KWH savings. And that 1% goal aligns with our projected KWH savings that we will be achieving during fiscal year 2526. In summary, our two-year Clean Energy Programs Plan is designed to achieve measurable and sustainable outcomes. Our programs are projected to deliver a TRC, Total Resource Cost, of greater than $1, which ensures that our portfolio is cost-effective. And finally, our portfolio is built to provide diverse programs to all customers in Glendale, empowering them to reduce consumption and actively support decarbonization goals. We have two of our staff members, Aneta Badalian and Brian Salazar, will go into details with individual programs. Aneta Badalian will be presenting programs that are funded by Public Benefit Charge Funds. And Brian Salazar will provide program updates funded by Low Carbon Fuel Standards. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Najarian, council members. I'm Aneta Badalian, Public Benefit Charge Marketing Manager, and I will be presenting our portfolio of PBC-funded programs. I'll start off with our Energy, Water Efficiency, and Conservation Programs, first of which is the Home Energy and Water Saving Rebates, which are offered to residential customers that purchase various Energy Star certified and other approved energy and water-saving appliances and devices through an online application portal. The program provides rebates for various appliances that you see on this slide, clothes dryers, dishwashers. The list includes various cooking appliances. And in some cases, the rebate is significant and can cover up to 80% of the appliance cost. Heat pump technology is fairly new, and despite its high efficiency, the adoption rate is still low. To contribute towards market acceleration, we propose increasing the rebates for heat pump water heaters from $1,000 to $4,000 in the coming fiscal year, and the rebates for heat pump HVACs from $500 to $1,000 per ton. We also propose adding a new rebate to incentivize electric panel upgrades that are required for fuel switching whenever heat pumps are installed. GOP purchases most of the water we supply to our customers from Metropolitan Water District. And besides the energy rebates that we provide to our customers, our customers also have access to the regional conservation programs offered by Metropolitan. And we propose to provide supplemental funding to enhance those rebates that are currently offered by Metropolitan Water District. Rebates are available for various indoor and outdoor water conserving devices, such as premium high-efficiency toilets, weather-based irrigation controllers, and high-efficiency clothes washers. There are also additional measures, such as soil moisture sensors, rain barrels, and different-sized cisterns. The Direct Install Turf Replacement for Disadvantaged Communities is another collaboration with Metropolitan Water District. This small-scale grant-funded program will provide turf removal and drought-tolerant landscape installation at 10 sites in Glendale in a disadvantaged area during the next two fiscal years. The Home Energy Water Saving Upgrades will evaluate the energy and water efficiency of customers' homes, install energy and water-saving measures, such as LED lighting, sensors, timers, window film installation, and various water-saving measures. The program will also offer concierge services for customers to access additional local, state, and federal incentives for further energy and water upgrades. The Home Energy Report and Usage Presentment. This offering provides energy usage and personalized insight on energy use to residential customers. Customers receive a home energy report every two months, which analyzes their usage of the prior two-month period and compares them to similar homes. Customers also receive weekly energy updates and high bill alerts. The Tree Power Program offers eligible single-family residents arborist services and up to three shade trees to help reduce energy consumption and enhance neighborhood aesthetics. By strategically planting these trees, customers can save anywhere from 10% to 50% on their AC costs. Moving on to business programs. The Business Energy Solutions Program helps medium and large businesses implement energy-saving upgrades through financial incentives. Customers can receive up to $100,000 a year for various energy efficiency projects. The Business Customer Engagement Portal will provide business customers web access to their electrical usage from their AMI meters via green button download. The tool will empower business customers to monitor and manage their electric usage. And customers will also receive proactive alerts and usage updates. Commercial Energy and Water Saving Rebates is a new program, which will provide rebates to commercial customers for purchase of energy and water-saving appliances and devices through an online application portal. The proposed rebates are for various kitchen appliances and measures, such as cooktops, hot food holding bins, and so on. In some cases, the rebates are pretty significant and can cover up to 90% of the appliance cost, which will benefit small businesses as they'll be purchasing the... And I'm sorry, you don't see the market prices on here, although they were added later. But if you were to reference the market prices, you would see for smaller businesses, purchasing the smaller appliances, which would be typical, it would cover up to 90, in some cases, more of the actual cost. Commercial Water Saving Rebates. GOP is committed to advancing water conservation through enhanced support of Metropolitan's regional programs to address historically low participation among Glendale commercial customers. We are proposing to allocate supplemental funding to promote the adoption of energy and water efficiency technologies. Some of the measures that will be co-funding are premium high-efficiency toilets, weather-based irrigation controllers, and soil moisture sensors. The list includes cooling tower controllers, dry vacuum pumps, and steam cookers. And we propose to match the rebate that Metropolitan currently offers for air-cooled ice-making machines, bringing the total rebate to $2,000. And the market price for these ice-making machines is from like $2,300 and up. So it could potentially cover nearly the whole cost of the machine. The Small Business Direct Installation Program will help local small businesses lower their energy and water bills. It will provide a personalized energy-water assessment and direct installation of efficient measures, such as LED lighting, smart thermostats, insulation, and low-flow faucet aerators. The program will also provide energy and water education to customers and make it more affordable for small businesses to operate efficiently. The In-School Energy and Water Conservation Education Program is available to sixth graders within their school curriculum. Besides the online lessons, students take home a conservation kit with various energy and water-saving products, which they, and then after they conduct an assessment at home, they install these devices with the help of their parents. Moving on to Energy Assistance Programs. Glendale Care provides qualified low-income customers with a $35 monthly bill discount. The Helping Hand Program, again, this is for qualified low-income customers who are experiencing a temporary financial emergency and having trouble paying for their utility services with a $150 one-time bill credit. The Guardian Program provides a monthly bill discount to those families that have a family member using a doctor-prescribed medical equipment. There are three levels of discount based on the estimated electric consumption of the medical equipment. And lastly, our Renewable Energy Programs. Our Photovoltaic and Energy Storage Interconnection Application Portal helps us process around 500 applications every year for solar systems and energy storage systems, batteries being installed in the city. The Off-Peak EV Charging Incentives Program provides EV owners a monthly incentive for charging their EVs during off-peak hours. Currently, the incentive is at $12 a month. We propose to increase it to 15 in the next fiscal year and to 20 in fiscal year 2627. We are looking to launch a new Demand Response Program in fiscal year 2627. The program will offer residential and small-business customers an incentive for enrolling the smart thermostat in the program and an annual incentive for participating in the peak events called during the program season. The smart thermostat will curb energy use from the customer's air conditioner or heat pump during peak events and reduce electric grid load and keep energy costs low. And that brings me to the end of my programs, and we'll transition over to Brian.
Want to do questions now?
Let me just see. Let's take questions on the PBC at this point. Just a moment. Brian, be ready. Mr. Bratman.
Okay. So I see our budget is $9.3 million for this year, $11.5 million. Is that, what is the balance that we have in the PBC budget? Or in the, not the budget, in the PBC fund. Fund. Thank you.
Councilmember Bratman, it's a little over, I know it's more than $10 million at the moment. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
So we have $10 million currently, before we start collecting into the fund? And what do we usually bring in every year? Or what are we anticipating to bring in for this year? Because rates are higher, so obviously, we're gonna be bringing in a little bit more.
Unfortunately, I don't have it on hand. It is in the staff report.
I mean, roughly, what's our annual...
Probably around $10 million.
So we bring in $10 million a year, and we're sitting on $10 million now?
That has accumulated, yes, over several years.
Okay. So why aren't we being more aggressive in deploying these funds that we have? Now we have a lot more than just $9.3 million that we could be doing this year.
In terms of putting more money into the programs that we're proposing, or...
Anything. I'm just saying, like, you're proposing to spend $9.3 million. We're sitting on all this money. We want, you know, I mean, I have other questions about what are our objectives here? But if our objectives, I think some objectives should be shaving the peak, right? Why aren't we putting more money into that, or putting more money into R and D? I'm not seeing anything there for this coming year. I just, that's something I don't really understand.
Councilmember Bratman, thank you for your question. We are building our portfolio, and we shared our strategic direction. And we recognize the importance of having programs in various program categories. For these next two years, these are the programs that we will be designing and launching. And during these next two years, while designing and launching all the programs that are presented in the presentation, we will be looking into these additional program areas and bringing more programs into the community. So the issue is the timing. We cannot immediately design, launch, and implement all of the program categories and all of the programs at once. But we are working towards enhancing our overall portfolio and bringing more impactful programs to the community by leveraging the funds that we have in our Public Benefit Charge Funds. We just want to make sure that all of the programs optimize the dollars and maximize the dollars and bring the most benefit to the community that's possible.
Okay. I don't think that, okay. That's an answer.
Councilmember Bratman, I believe that just of the responses, it's a question of resources, right, and the availability of resources. From what I hear, staff has plans, but they're taking this in phases to get these programs that they're recommending off the ground. But they are not going to be sitting on the $10 million in the fund balance and just waiting for another two years, right? So they do have plans, but it's in stages that will be presented to council.
So within these two years, you're gonna come back with plans to increase these programs, or...
Within the two years, we will be designing and implementing all of the programs that are included in this presentation while designing and finding more programs to incorporate in our portfolio. So it's going to gradually grow to provide more programs and services to the community.
Okay. I mean, we have had the Clean Energy Office now for how long? I mean, it's been over a year.
It's been one year.
So I think there should have been time to think about being more aggressive in using the resources we have. But anyway, I do have the EV charging incentive, the off-peak charging incentive. How do we know? Is this on our system?
It's based on AMI data that's analyzed by the vendor that's administering the program for us.
What, can you explain that?
They analyze the data from the meter to make sure that there is no charging during the peak hours. And they do get a couple of forgivenesses, in a sense, every month. But if there's consistent charging, if there's more than two instances of charging during the peak period, then they don't receive the incentive for that month. So they don't get removed from the program or lose all of their incentives just for that given month. So the analysis is done on a month-by-month basis.
So we're actually able to see every single person in the program and how they're, whether they're charging at night?
Correct.
Okay. Do we know all the residents that have EVs?
We do not. So that's something we're hoping to do more work towards, to find out possibly from DMV, because I know other U.S. [inaudible].
because I know other utilities have had access to registration data and target all EV owners. Currently, the only way we know a customer has EV is if they've applied for our EV charger rebate or they've participated in this program.
Can't the AMI data tell us that? I mean, it has a very specific signature.
If they're charging. That's a possibility, to analyze all of the AMI data and identify potential chargers.
Okay. I have a couple more. The Home Energy Reports, what kind of ROI do we have on that? Are we able to judge how effective those are? I know, for me, I feel like I just delete them at this stage. How do we know they're effective?
So to calculate energy savings, the contractor or power conducts statistical tests, control group, treatment group to calculate the savings, and we use an energy modeling tool to calculate the total resource cost for the program for energy reports. Some other communications do not result in energy savings, but energy reports result in energy savings. So it is calculated the same way that all of the other programs in the portfolio are calculated for cost-effectiveness.
Does it give us a higher ROI than, let's say, some other program we have out there? Or lower? Or are you looking at that? I mean, are you looking -- because it seems like there's so many things here. Are you looking at which ones have the most impact?
We look at it, but the methodology to calculate the savings is different. So for example, for actual measures that are being installed, the savings are based on deemed savings, and we're using different technical resource manuals. But for energy reports, that's a pure statistical analysis conducted by the contractor. So the methodology is different. We're not comparing it as apples to apples, but overall, the program is cost-effective. But we will be looking into that area as well when it comes to communication, outreach, education, sending various reports to customers to inform them and provide them with usage presentment, and trying to streamline it with other technologies that we will be having in place so customers can access their usage in a more streamlined and cost-effective way. So for these next two years, we will be continuing with Home Energy Reports and these usage presentment tools while looking more, kind of having a closer look into streamlining the usage presentment for customers utilizing other potential technologies.
Okay. All right. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay.
Morning. So I think to address some of the questions that Mr. Brodmann had, I think one of the reasons that we do have this big fund, and correct me if I'm wrong, is because we have had programs where we've allocated funding to, and people haven't actually utilized those programs. I don't know if I want to call it ineffective, right? But the funds were not used to the degree that we allocated funds towards that program. I think some of the comments I've made in the past is I rather see less programs but more impactful. As an example, you have a $50 rebate on a dishwasher. If someone is on the verge of maybe wanting to, this isn't something that's going to tip them over, right? And so I'd rather take that 50 bucks and allocate that to, say, a refrigerator and have that program be, instead of like $200 or $400, go up to $500, than have multiple programs where the amount in each program is not incentive enough for someone to move there, right, or to use that program. Maybe they'll use it if they were already going to switch it out, so it's a cost-saving, but it's not -- I don't see it as an incentive program when the dollar amount is so low. And so I think one of my suggestions would be, as we're going through this process, really looking at, hey, where can I shift money? And make -- you know, I would prefer to have less programs, but have them be more impactful for the incentive to actually work. The tree program that you have, if I remember correctly from the last budget session or the session before, there was a cut to the tree planting program. Am I remembering this correct? So I'm trying to figure out how these two work together. I think it was the first session you guys presented, you were recommending a cut.
You were talking about?
Six-year to seven-year cycle, I think.
Yes.
That's just the tree maintenance cycle that Public Works has for the different districts. That program, going from a six-year trimming cycle to a seven-year trimming cycle, has nothing to do with PBC specifically.
Okay. And then, if you are doing this in phases, I recognize and I'm really excited about the business support. What I would like to see is that you actually take the time to maybe have some roundtables with restaurant owners to find out exactly what it is that's being used, because I think in our conversations, you know, it was confirmed that these conversations haven't been done. Maybe they can point to and say, you know what? We don't need all of these. There's a consensus around what restaurants actually use. And again, we take the pot of money and let make less programs but more impactful to help them. And then I think, lastly, when we're looking at things like HVAC systems that are in the $15,000 range or anything that's larger to switch out, possibly looking at a program with our credit union or some other financial institutions and building a relationship with them, not that we cover or we are the guarantee party, but for there to be some sort of linkage between here are the rebates you can get, and here's a partnership we have with a financial institution that can help you get, you know, a microloan and something for us to look at, maybe through our finance, if it's something that we can do. Because I think it would be helpful to -- for individuals that can't afford it and don't have the cash to do it, to be able to also help guide them to a place where they can get financed for some of the bigger projects that would save them money in the long term. I think that's -- generally, that's kind of my -- I don't want to go through each of the programs, but I just identified the dishwasher as an example of the $50 rebate program you have. Unless you tell me that dishwashers are like the energy suckers, and then we shift over like the $400 from somewhere else and make the dishwasher an important program.
Yeah, the rebate is basically too small because the incremental savings are not that big, so it's not one of the most cost-effective measures to incentivize, but we just wanted to still have something, an incentive, that will probably help some customers to be more inclined to invest in Energy Star instead of code-compliant dishwasher. So that's the main reason. But we can probably just.
I mean, if something costs $800, and you're offering a $50 rebate, and someone's thinking about whether they're going to switch out a refrigerator or dishwasher, they see a higher number on one over the other, they're just human psychology, I think.
So I think these rebates are -- some of them are great, and I believe they'll be very useful. In terms of communicating the information to the public, how was that done during the Small Business Summit we recently had?
Currently, we don't have a small, a separate small-business rebate program for customers, so.
Not necessarily for our small businesses, but for some of these equipments that you were mentioning, some of the more industrial-use equipment, like, have we mentioned? How do you communicate that to folks? How do they find out that these rebates exist?
So the program is still in a design phase, but as soon as we come closer to implementing and launching a program, we will have a detailed communications, marketing, outreach plan to identify all of the communication channels, all of the potential channels, to get the information to business customers by using, for example, summits or Chamber of Commerce, various communication channels that we use, traditional and non-traditional.
I think that once you officially launch this, I hope that a lot of people will take advantage of it, but they first need to know that it exists. And in order for it to work, you also need the feedback, as has been mentioned. You know, this is where I have a challenge with staff, is that I think that everyone needs to be on the same page, communicating when there is a Small Business Summit, have someone from GWP there, interacting, talking to folks, not just sitting at a table, networking and figuring how to get people to work with you. A lot of people in this city care about the city, especially when they're investing their life savings into a business, and would love to give feedback and benefit from some of these programs. So I think we need to all do a better job of that. Then, in addition to these rebates, the energy efficiency rebates are considered -- they're not taxable. They're exempt, but water efficiency rebates are taxable currently under federal tax code. Have you considered asking us, council, to author a letter to Congress for the current bills that are there? We were just in Washington with Metropolitan Water District advocating for this, to make the water rebates not be taxable income.
We haven't considered that, but that's a good approach, I believe, because all of the rebate programs for water conservation are implemented through Metropolitan's regional program, and our customers have access to that program. It will be great for customers to.
Well, I would like to ask staff to -- we just had it last night, less than, I think, 12 hours ago, discussion about letters of support. Here's a bill that Metropolitan Water supports that I think all of its member agencies should sign on as supporters to make the water -- it's the Water Conservation Rebate Tax Parity Act, which will make water rebates on par with energy efficiency rebates. But when you do a large project, it's not taxable.
That's a great idea. We'd definitely follow up on that.
And also, anyone that we have in the lobbying sphere to bring it to their attention. And lastly, in terms of the smart thermostats that we have in households, are we able to separate out those households to see how they're performing and whether having a smart thermostat? We had something in the past, right? Wasn't there like this little Kiva screen or something that was given? That program is no longer in process? Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Kosakian, that program did end a couple of years ago, the SIVA frames.
And what took that -- its place?
We had, as far as real-time access to usage information, nothing replaced it, but those customers just got enrolled in our demand-response program at the time.
Okay. And so, and then in terms of the results, how effective has the program been?
The SIVA program?
No, no. Either that or anything else that we're enrolling, rolling those same individuals into. The reason I ask, and maybe you don't have to have an answer, but, you know, there's a lot of good ideas that come to us, but unless we understand what the impacts of them are, it's very hard for us to get behind scaling something out to the whole city or even get other people to buy into the idea, no matter how good it is, right? But if we can show folks that, hey, these five households would have normally used this much electricity, but after, you know, enrolling in this program and working with the city, they had a savings of X amount of dollars, then people's curiosity gets piqued, then people are interested in getting involved. Look, no one was installing solar panels on their rooftops because they thought they looked great. The way solar panels really took off is by, you know, part of it was word of mouth, people saying, you know, I installed solar panels on my rooftop, and I pay hardly anything for my electricity bill now. That has stickability. That has people's attention. So unless we are able to communicate to folks the efficacy of these programs, doesn't matter how great the program is, people are not going to break their already preordained habits.
So as councilmember, I don't have those statistics. If there were savings associated with the SIVA frames, I could look into it. That was before I took over oversight of these programs, but I can look into that.
Thank you.
Good morning. I just want to ask a couple of questions to make sure I understand this report correctly. So we have $9 million and some change, $9,300,000 in our account, and this is for Clean Energy Framework and Strategic Alignment. There are two, four, six, eight, 10 programs in here. My understanding is 2.8% of electric revenues. Is that where the $9 million come from?
That is correct.
Okay. So my understanding was that every month when I paid my bill, and I know there's so many people ask the same question, the reason that I willingly paid that fee is I thought it's more for energy assistance. Is this the energy assistance is where the funds go to low-income and disadvantaged communities?
That is correct. It's for income-qualified customers.
So we are helping people who are low-income and disadvantaged. They live in apartments, they don't own a house. So half of this $9 million, give and take, goes to that program, the low-income, and the other half goes to all the other programs that we have. So basically, people are subsidizing the equipment or appliances or furnaces for other people who are trying to replace their equipment or their appliances at home, right? And I'm not saying -- my understanding was always, I thought we were just helping the low-income disadvantaged communities, but as far as these programs go, the Home Energy Program, I signed up for it. GWP came in and did all the retrofit that they had to do. They made recommendations. We've done it all. It didn't, I'm sorry to say, it didn't make any -- to answer Mr. Kosakian's question, it didn't make a difference on my bill. The EV rebate, $15 rebate, if they charge -- I have an EV, and if we charge our car after the peak hour, which is after 10:00 PM or what have you, what is the difference in cost? I know you get a $15 rebate, but it's not even a -- it's 50 cents a day. But what is the difference? Because if there is no difference in cost, if I charge it at 4:00 PM or 11:00 PM, then people come in and plug it in. Do we have a number as to what the difference is?
I can take that.
The cost of electricity when you charge off-peak hour and not on-peak hour?
Councilmember Garpetian, there is no cost difference. If you're on a standard rate, if you're on a time-of-use rate, then yes, there will be a difference, and that will vary on your overall usage. We can't tell you exactly how much that difference would be.
And that's a program that you have to sign up to be on a time-of-use rate?
Time-of-use is a rate, yes, that customers can sign up for.
Okay. As far as the appliances go, if we are encouraging people to purchase Energy Star dishwashers or heat pumps or what have you, there are other kinds of appliances as well that are less expensive than what we have here, right? Like, if it's $1,000 to $2,000 for a dryer, are there any dryers that are $400, $500 in general, that are not Energy Star?
Probably.
Okay. Because it makes a difference. I mean, if you go purchase an appliance, if it's Energy Star, most people don't know what -- how much of a difference it would make at the end for three, four, five years, the life of that appliance, and the cost of it upfront. If it's $500 difference and I'm getting $50 or $100, then it won't make that big of a difference for me. So people will buy whatever they see in front of them. And availability of these appliances are -- we changed our dishwasher. It took three or three-and-a-half months for it to come because it wasn't available. And slide 37, you mentioned that you want to keep the energy rate low. How low? What is the -- this program, what kind of difference it would make in our rates or in our bills? How much of a difference would this program make when we're spending four-and-a-half million dollars a year in these programs? How much of a difference would this program make when we're spending $4.5 million a year in these programs?
That's a different slide. They don't match the printed one, so it's this one, Demand.
Or Demand Response?
So, this specific program is still in the design phase. If you're referring to demand-response programs, $1 million. That we're budgeting for '26, '27. And we will be incorporating a past experience that we had with our previous demand-response programs and SIVA programs, and also looking into some other successful programs that other utilities offered to come up with a framework that makes sense for the utility from cost-effectiveness perspective and also to the customers. So, we don't have the finalized framework of the program yet, and I cannot provide all the details right now. But we will be looking into some various frameworks to ensure that the program is impactful.
Okay. So, the last question, the end goal, our goal with this program, besides the Energy Assistance Program, what is our goal? Is it to reduce the natural gas usage? Is it to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions? Is it to have more efficient appliances? What is the end goal?
It's all of that, but the main end goal is, when it comes to policy direction, it's $10 million KWH per year. But we also support decarbonization, and that's why we're offering various rebates for electrification. So, it's greenhouse gas emissions, energy efficiency, peak load reduction in a cost-effective way.
Okay, because we had the survey yesterday, it was, where is my survey? And on page 10, climate change, lack of green space and natural areas was, when they asked people, what is your most concerns that you have? It was 2%. So, I'm not saying we shouldn't do these programs. What I'm saying is this budget is very small to be very effective. And when you look at the program, some are 500 people, 500 rebates, some are 100, some are 800. With 80,000 accounts that we have, I don't know, I want to understand, I want us to spend the money in areas that will make a good difference, will make a difference, put a dent in the problem that we have. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember, and members of the council, I think it's very important to point out that these programs have a fair amount of flexibility built into them in the sense that we can, as we view the progress of an individual program, move dollars around within the PBC fund structure. This gives us the ability to address the needs. If we see a program that's really picking up and is very worthwhile to the customer base, we can actually put more money into that program. If one is not performing as we see fit, we can, we have the flexibility to either remove money from that fund or look at ways to address that program to make it more effective. You know, we, more customer outreach, or talk about the possibility of additional incentives. The key here is that, as a couple of you have mentioned, that we require nimbleness in the development of these programs. These, not all these programs are well-vetted at this stage because they are newly being, they're being developed, like this one in particular. So, the premise is that we want to see how effective they are going to be, right? And we want to spend the money most intelligently for the customer base so that they can reap the benefits of that.
Yeah, and I agree with Councilmember, that if you have maybe less programs and more funding for those programs, they would be more effective.
Right. And again, that flexibility already exists within the program structure. We can move dollars around.
Okay, let's, it's 10. We got a lot to do still, so if it's a...
I just have one comment.
Yes.
But I had, I had addressed this with staff, but I think that one of the best ways that you can market these is having it as a part of a permanent sheet that Community Development and Building and Safety give out. Most of these things are things that people are looking for when they're doing renovations, they're building a new home and so forth, and their first access point for permits is them. So, tying all of this with whatever checklist Building and Safety is giving out and permitting would be a great collaboration to get the word out as a starter.
We are going to be putting in every way, means and form. I think one of the outcomes of the survey yesterday was the fact that our flyers are very effective within the bills and that our online presence is very effective. So, those are two big pluses for us, and we're going to take advantage of those also.
Okay, thank you. Let's keep rolling.
All right, good morning, Mayor Mujaria, members of council, Brian Salazar. I'm going to be presenting the Low Carbon Fuel Standards, LCFS, part of our portfolio, so. The Low Carbon Fuel Standards is part of the California Air Resources Board Program, California Program. GWP has been participating since 2017. And during that time, GWP has earned about 134,000 credits, of which we've sold about 80,000 credits to continue funding our program. So, our annual budget, as you can see here, for the next two years is 2.1 million and 2.9. On this next page, you're going to see just a table of all the programs. One of them is sunsetting. I'll explain that when I get to that specific slide, and then we're adding a couple of programs. So, before I get into those programs, I want to just show a couple tables of some programs we have. First one is the Residential EV Charging Station Rebate Program. So, you can see from the budget, it's fluctuated quite a bit over the last couple of years, as well as the expenditures. And what we've done is we've tried to address the expenditures, kind of reiterating what Mr. Mellon just explained, is our nimbleness in addressing these, what we find in these programs and providing funding when we identify the need. So, out of those programs, currently, year-to-date, we have 78 chargers installed at 78 separate residential homes. And the average cost for the rebate that we've funded is $1,390. Now, to contrast with the Commercial EV Rebate Station, Charging Station Rebate, you can see the budget there is fluctuated quite a bit as well. We identified a need earlier this year to add some additional funding. We had some reservations that we couldn't confirm we could fund, and by moving some funds around, we've made that happen. So, year-to-date, we've installed 71 EV chargers at 11 different multifamily locations. The average cost per port, per charger for that is $6,970. We see the value in that despite the difference in the, between the average cost for the residential and the commercial as being value for commercial because this also addresses our low-income communities. And then, those chargers are available to more than one person at that facility. So, moving on to the list of programs. So, with our Transportation Electrification Program, we have the Electric Vehicle System Equipment, otherwise known as EVSC, and this is our Public EV Charging Infrastructure Program. We currently have 11 locations, city-owned locations, with 84 EV charging ports. Budget for '25, '26 is 500, and then we double that the next year as we continue to ramp up this program. Projected annual growth for charging ports is 15 to 25 per year. And that does include a combination of Level 2 and Level 3 chargers. For the Residential EV Charging Rebate Program, I kind of recapped our budget there, but we offer incentive levels of $200 to $700 for Level 2 chargers and then additional upgrade or rebate for electric panel upgrades of $800 to $1,000. Those are income-qualified, so that's why that range is there. Lower income gets an additional incentive. Budget for each year is 75K, and projected annual growth is 100 EV charging ports per year. Most likely, that would be reflected in 100 homes. Most homes just install one. For the Commercial Multifamily EV Charging Station Rebate Program, this program offers $50,000 to $75,000 per project or 50 to 75% of the cost, whichever is less. These are for Level 2 EV chargers. We have a budget there each year of $1 million. We just recently increased that for the reasons I explained. We see that a lot of value in providing additional incentives, rebates to multifamily owners. Our goal there is 125 EV charging ports per year. For the next fiscal year, '26, '27, we, the next fiscal year, we're going to be developing the program for our Used Electric Vehicle Rebate Program. This will be for eligible pre-owned EVs. As I mentioned, we are in the development of this program, and we anticipate with $500,000, we'll be able to incentivize about 380 EV rebates per year. Now, the range will be 1,500 to 2,500, and that'll also be income-qualified, so lower income will get the larger rebate. The Clean, the California Clean Fuel Rewards Program is going to be sunsetting, so we will not have this expense going forward. The utilities that participated in this program met the intended goal, and so the program is coming to an end. We also have a web-based customer guide for electric vehicles on our website. This guide helps customers discover electric vehicles, maximize incentives through calculation tools, locate charging stations, and then also shop for home EV chargers. Our budget here for this program is $27,000 per year. Next, we have the EV and e-bike guest drive events. I've seen a number of you at these events. This is a, this is an event put on by a consultant we have, Electric Car Insider. They provide this turnkey EV guest drive event. The budget for '25, '26 is $140,000. You'll notice that the budget significantly decreases. The reason for this decrease is that we are partnering with our local neighboring utilities to co-sponsor these events. So, the event that we are planning to do later in September is going to be co-sponsored by Pasadena in which Glendale and Burbank will participate as well. But that's still in the early planning, but more to come on that. So, we do anticipate some savings in the budget, but no decrease in the level of service. Next, we have the e-bike rebate program. This also is income-qualified, so you see the range there of $300 to $400. Budget for '25, '26 is $34,000, and the following year is $44,000. The reason for the increase is we've seen an increase in interest in e-bikes, as you've probably noticed within the city. So, the projected annual growth or participation is 100 to 140 rebates. We also have a leaf blower rebate. It's a $50 rebate, up to $250 in combination with the AQMD rebate. The budget for this is $6,000 per year, and we anticipate offering about 120 rebates annually. This is a new program that we are rolling out as well. It's a vehicle-to-grid program. We call it a study in this, but we do want to grow subject matter experts within GWP to grow this. We do see this as an opportunity to implement some RND to make this happen. We have funded $150,000 in '26, '27. But as Mr. Mellon mentioned earlier, we do have the flexibility and the nimbleness to move funds around to make that happen earlier or to increase or decrease the funds as needed. Available for any questions, this page here just includes some program links for your reference.
Okay, questions? Mr. Rotman?
Okay, a quick one first. The drive, the EV drive event, is that going to be still in Glendale?
We will move those events around. So, this isn't set in stone yet, but we are talking about having the event sponsored by Pasadena at the Rose Bowl. It will be a much bigger event than what we've had here at City Hall.
Okay, it's been nice to have them here, and they've been really well-attended. I'm afraid that moving them is going to cut out a lot of people from Glendale who are not going to bother going. I would...
Thank you, Mr. Rotman. That's a concern I have as well. However, some of the feedback that we did receive out of the last couple of events, we have been growing the event. We've invited a number of other city organizations, which has been really great, and some other bike shops that have come. But we have started to outgrow this facility for that event. And some of the feedback that we got recently was that it wasn't open enough, it wasn't visual enough for passerby's on Glendale Avenue to see the event and just stop in without knowing about the event. So, we are deviating from what we've done in the past, but I think I'm positive we can make this a good outcome.
Well, at the very least, I'd like us to measure how many Glendale residents attend the event and compare it to what we're seeing now or what we have been seeing in the past and see whether that's effective.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I have the same question on the Low Carbon Fuel Standard budget as I did on PBC, which is what, you know, you're saying 2.1 million this year, 2.9 million next year. What is, how much money do we have in our fund?
Yeah, so we have roughly, roughly $3 million. We just sold 40,000 credits for $74, so we got a good chunk there to fund at least the next fiscal year. And we do have a balance of roughly $60,000 credits. We're generating roughly $8,000 a month. So, we do have a balance to sell. Now, that's, the value of those credits fluctuates quite a bit.
But roughly, what would that?
Roughly would that be?
Yeah.
$60,000 times $70, or 4.2 million?
So, that would, so let's say, give or take four, and then we have three in the budget. Okay.
That's correct.
And you're proposing to spend 2.1? So, again, I think, you know, I'd like to see us be more aggressive in deploying those funds. I think there's very little RND. The only thing I'm seeing is this vehicle-to-grid. I would like to see us also consider vehicle-to-home. There are some, there is some interest, and it would be a matter of, I think, us permitting, figuring out how to permit that. I don't even know if that's a program that needs to come under Low Carbon Fuel Standard, but I'd like us, you know, perhaps thinking about this as an RND initiative to do that and to do that sooner. I don't know why we'd be waiting until '26, '27. Vehicle-to-grid is something, you know, I've been asking us to look into that and start to get some knowledge around that for, you know, at least two years. So, I don't see why that should wait. Can you go to slide 51, the leaf blower rebate? So, I don't know if that's a picture of a gas leaf blower. It looks like one to me. You're not giving rebates to gas leaf blowers. These are for electric leaf blowers, I assume.
I think this picture is celebrating the fact that we're removing those from the streets.
You need a little, you need a little X over it or something like that. Okay. Okay, and then I think my last one is, could you go to 43, the EV charging? This was, yeah, so this is for us. This is public, right?
That's correct.
Okay, now, I believe, Mr. City Manager, you've said that we're working on a kind of city-owned EV charging master plan of some kind?
Not necessarily city-owned, but we are working on a master plan, comprehensive master plan that will cover the entire city, more specifically where there is a lack of charging stations, but high demand. So, staff is working on that master plan.
I mean, these seem like very small dollars, given the magnitude of the need. And, you know, we, I remember at one point seeing some data on our ratio of EV chargers to registered EVs in the city. It was relatively low. And so, I'd like to see us be more aggressive on this, getting more chargers out there, either public or I think your next slide is, or one of your slides has to do with like a multifamily, you know? I think that's really where the need is, a lot more than the single family. I think single family, at this point, people can afford their chargers. But it's the multifamily, that's really where we want to provide the support, and the public spaces for people that don't have garages. I'd really like to see us be more leaning into that a lot more and thinking about what kind of ratio, you know, what's the growth in EVs expected to be and how do we maintain the right ratio of chargers to EVs so that it's convenient for people? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think as it pertains to the event, I would like to keep it in Glendale. I feel like anything that moves or is coordinated with Pasadena, Pasadena tends to gobble up. I feel like anything that moves or is coordinated with Pasadena, Pasadena tends to gobble up not just our efforts, but the PR and the use that comes with it. I recognize that you're out of the space, but maybe hosting a bigger event like Cars on Brand in partnership with our dealerships can be a coordinated effort, along with economic development, as an example, of how we're also promoting our own car dealerships. I always say that aside from what you're trying to get people to do, bringing food and music and some entertainment around that, also draws out people that possibly wouldn't have attended an event for cars, but Mr. Mellon has something to say.
Yes. I think we're, we're taking the council's input to heart on this. Obviously, we don't want to be taking something that was grounded in Glendale away from Glendale. The intent is that we may be outgrowing our old pair of pants. We're, we're trying to scale up. Obviously, there's some opportunity here for us to still take advantage of Glendale locations and maybe do a smaller version of it. But the intent, again, was to try and scale up to the level of the people's interest. So, I don't think there's anything against us doing both.
I would love for the partnership to be with Pasadena. Just want to bring them here instead of us, them taking us there.
And I think it was, I think we were talking about actually three cities total, but that's still in the works.
And I'm guessing we're right in the middle.
That does seem obvious.
Okay. So, I think that's one. I think some of the other ones, like the leaf blower, I think I said it during the staff briefing, like a $50 rebate on something that's costing like $10,000 to $15,000, right? For the professional ones that the gardeners need to switch out to, that the 10 to 15 is the estimate that I've been getting, right? So, it's, you know, either make it sizable or switch out a program that, again, like people will, will utilize, so.
Right. And so, that's part of the reason why we actually moved into LCSF, and I believe there was an additional support for that one from?
AQMD offers 250.
So, yeah, we're supplemental with AQMD's rebate.
Okay, and I think one of the other things we talked about was, like, on our website, when you're going to take a look, it, all of the opportunities are listed together versus just only ours. So, if someone went to, for, I don't know, EV charger or for a leaf blower, it lists all the links and all the state, federal, or local, regional programs that are available. So, people are not thinking that it's only the one that we have for 50 bucks.
Right.
Right? And then I think, lastly, that's going to be part of the revenue conversation, the EV charging. I know that, this was back in October, I want to say, there was a company that was like trying to make like a $6 million investment into our city. The conversation was around right-of-way or curb EV chargers. My understanding was that there was, you guys were working with Public Works to put out an RFP. We're now in June. I don't know if that RFP has gone out, but, you know, I, I think part of that conversation was also working with CDD and even getting data from CBRE that would help guide these companies of like, here are the dense areas, especially the folks that are in the multifamilies that don't have capability to place the EV chargers in their homes or in their, in their garages, but there's things that are available out on the street. So, I don't know where we're at with that, but that particular program has been sitting there for a while.
It's, well, slight clarification, hasn't been sitting there. We are working with the individual departments. As you might assume, from the utilities' perspective, we are attempting to do one small thing, and when we start to do one small thing, we realize it's not a small thing. So, it branches into other areas and affects other departments. And one of the things we wanted to do is may, maybe take a more comprehensive look about how to build out EV chargers, especially as they're maybe effective to multifamily homes. And when we get into those areas, we are stepping on a few other departments' toes. We want to make sure we don't do that, that we work with them collaboratively. So, CDD and Public Works are definitely part of that team that we're working on putting together and figuring out how that approach best works. So, eventually, we will probably do something like an RFP going out there, but we want to make sure all the boxes are checked with the rest of the departments.
Just don't want us to go down a rabbit hole, and, you know, three years later, we're still having the conversation.
I understand.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Carpetti?
So, in one of our reports in the past, we, it indicated that we have about 11,000 EVs in Glendale. And if I purchased an EV, believe me, many more people are going to purchase EVs. So, the numbers are going to go up tremendously, and I think we are in desperate need of chargers. So, we were talking about how to be effective. Maybe we should concentrate on charging stations more than some of the other programs. I know that there are some supermarkets that they teamed up, they have a smaller footprint, but they teamed up with one of those companies that installs EV chargers. So, they do it in the same parking lot, in the same facility, but most of them are fast chargers. What do they call it? Supercharger. So, I know the locations in Glendale, there's one or two that has superchargers, and there's always a line, so that's where the need is. I think we need to concentrate on that and whatever we can do to help to increase the number of EV chargers in some of these larger facilities. I think Air One is coming in, maybe that, that, that parking lot is a great location, is in the middle of all downtown and residential neighborhoods, all behind it, it's all multi-residential, older buildings, so they can all use it, especially at night, evening hours. So, that's, that's one thing. The event moving from Glendale, I'm not in favor of it. We have larger commercial locations, businesses on Glenox that have very large parking lots. We can host, and they will gladly do it. We can host them over there. It's a, you know, great, great visibility, you can't go wrong. You know where they are, between Brand and Pacific, there are some, some businesses up there that have large parking lots. I think we can, we have to concentrate on that. And also, some of the car manufacturing companies, they had pop-up events. I went to two of them. One was Cadillac. They had their, they, they would bring like 10 or 15 cars, and you sign up, and it was very quick. You could go drive around with, they had somebody help you drive the car around and see how it feels and compare to, you know, gas combustion engine cars. They, they had it in Americana in the parking lot, so you would come out and go around the building. Maybe we can team up with some of these dealers to, to have some pop-up events, but in, in places that are more visible. As far as the leaf blower's rebate, it's a good thing to know, because I kind of, you know, my, my, our gardener didn't want to change it. We told him, you have to change it. So, he changed the leaf blower, and it's an electric one. He was complaining about the batteries, so in our neighborhood, I knew that he was, you know, serving, servicing few of my neighbors. We came together, bought some batteries for him, helped him to purchase more batteries, so during the day he can use it and not, not, not deal with it. But I would tell, what does it take to, what does he have to, does he have to bring a receipt for the, for the rebate, or how does it work? He has to apply for it, right?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Carpetti. And so, the terms and conditions require that the customer provides an invoice receipt as well as just proof of residency.
But they don't live in Glendale? Proof of, for the leaf blowers?
Yes.
Yes, all of our rebates are available for Glendale residents, GOP customers. Well, the AQMD, I guess, would be available to that individual that does work in Glendale but does not reside in Glendale. But the $50 GOP rebate would only be for Glendale customers.
So, $50 only for Glendale residents, the 200, he can get the $250?
So, why would we, wait, why would we have? For the most part, I mean, you're, the individual's not going to purchase one for their home themselves. It's for the employee or the gardener or whoever you want to.
We do have customers who purchase them, because there are smaller ones, there are around 200, $250, that residents actually purchase to use themselves.
Believe it or not, some of us still do our old landscaping, and I did switch over from the gas to the electric.
It'd be nice to have a lawn.
Or a driveway that needs blowing.
No, the ones, the ones that are residential use, I have one, it's an electric one, but the, the ones that they have, it's like they control the air, the flow of the air, the speed of it. It's not that, that sophisticated. They need something that, anyways, I, I think that, I will, I will let him know to bring his, his receipt and maybe apply for that $250, and we'll deal with it. So, that's all I have. I think we're getting there, you know? Again, if I purchased an EV, I think many more people will, and my leaf blower is electric, our household is about 70% electric, 30% gas, and we're working on all of it, so we'll see, we'll see how it goes. That's all I have right now.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. I think that will wrap this.
Yeah, great questions, great suggestions. This will be part of, we, we took, staff took notes of your recommendations and the changes you'd like to see and be part of the staff report we submitted for adoption on June 24th. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I kind of have an umbrella comment. Previously, there were mostly questions, but I just, I do want to probably concur with some of my colleagues here. I, I think it does feel like too much of a peanut butter approach. We're just trying to cover so much ground, and what I would like to see is fewer programs picking the ones that have the highest ROI, right? The highest cost effectiveness. And you are, you are studying or you have analyzed cost effectiveness. So, I would like to see us look at the, the ones that have the highest cost effectiveness and focus on those. I think it'll also make the communication easier if we have fewer programs to communicate. And I would like us to be a little more strategic about what our objectives are. I think, you know, in my view, our objective, one of our major objectives should be peak shaving, because that will, you know, reduce cost to the utility, and eventually, we can pass that on to the rate payer. I think that should be a primary objective, peak shaving. And, and I think that means we, we need to do, we need to be more aggressive in, in demand response, whether it's the thermostat side or it's the electric vehicle charging to get that peak shaving. Of course, I would like to see us, you know, reduce the amount of, of energy use overall, and, and CO2 reduction, to me, is, is a very high priority. But I think if we were going to choose one thing, I think it would be peak shaving at this juncture in where we are with our power systems. That's, I just wanted to make those comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Tectonian?
Okay, I'm going to try to make up some, some time so we can still finish on, by our, our deadline here of noon. We have on the screen here essentially our budget study session for all the items that we're going to cover. All we've done is the first bullet point there. The rest will be done by a number of different people, as, as you'll see. A little bit of a story that needs to be told before we start talking about our capital improvement program, so bear with me over the next three or four slides. What you're seeing here is that this time last year, we entered our budget study discussions with a total fund balance in our general fund CIP of $52.3 million. That money essentially wasn't available cash. It was already appropriated to a list of projects within the general fund. As part of our adopted 2425 fiscal year budget, council authorized a transfer from the general fund to the CIP fund of $10 million to fund 2425 projects. During the year, council also authorized $2,059,000 worth of projects specifically for the Lockersent Avenue Rehabilitation Project, North Brand Demonstration Project, and the Pacific Park Playground and Pool Project. As we got closer to preparing for these discussions sometime in February or March, when realized we had quite a deficit in 2425, one of the moves, one of the many moves that we made was we administratively reduced the $10 million transfer to a $9 million transfer, sent that million-dollar difference back to the general fund to help offset the year. Specifically, that million dollars that council had previously appropriated was tied back to the civic floor, civic auditorium floor replacement, and a small portion for some work here at City Hall. That left us with total resources of about $16.3 million and appropriations for previously approved council projects, council-approved projects from pre-2425 plus 2425 in the amount of $63.5 million. What you see there is that even then, we had a $220,000 deficit in the fund, which is nothing to be concerned about. We generally run a deficit in the, in the CIP project, the CIP budget. The only way that you would realize a deficit like that is if everything got done in one single fiscal year, and that's, the likelihood of that happening just isn't going, isn't going to happen. So, in, in March, when we first started discussing this with council, we were preparing to discuss this with council, we, we saw that we had our $220,000 deficit, but we needed to make some serious moves in order to help fund more pressing needs in the 2526 fiscal year. The way we did that was by either delaying, reducing, or canceling previously approved projects that council had, again, previously approved in 2425 and before that. I want to make sure I make something very clear. When I say we reduced, this is what's been proposed. If we adopt our budget, these are the things that, that are proposed to be cut. We haven't administratively done any of this stuff on our own. These were council-approved items to begin with. Specifically, some of the areas where we found resources, I don't want to say savings, was through the delay of the Verdugo Park South renovation project, that was $200,000. There were some additional reductions. The Alex Theater, we knew that was a multi-phase project, multiple years. We knew what we were going to be able to accomplish in 2425, so we pushed a portion of it off to a future year. There was a project in the Community Development Department for tenant improvement. That was basically a remodel of CDD's Building and Safety Office. That got pushed off to 2526, and I think it was reduced by a small amount, because we're going to do some of the planning work and the architectural work in-house. There was a reduction to branch library budgets for unforeseen needs that may arise. We thought that was $100,000 that we could reduce from their, their small pot of, of annual allocation, just based on our experience. And then there was a seismic and functional retrofit of fire stations, reduced by about $2.5 million. That's not to say this is not going to get done. We just knew that it wasn't going to happen in 2425, and we're currently in the process of the, developing the fire master plan to begin with. So, all of these items have either been reduced or reduced and, and deferred to future years. Specific projects that were canceled or closed out because they had some remaining funds, but we weren't going to move any further with them, is the EV chargers at city sites. That is something that we're currently working on, as we discussed a few moments ago. When it comes back, we've determined that we would be able to pay that out of the city's fleet fund as opposed to the general fund CIP. Casa Verdugo Library renovations, $450,000. Again, that was money that was allocated for a remodel that would have been tied with the Fire Station 26 remodel. Because the two are tied, it makes sense. It doesn't make sense to hold on to $450,000 for a project we know we're not going to break ground on. So, it's, it's a matter of releasing those resources and allocating them to something more pressing at the current moment. And then there was a, a small budget left over for some final renovations here at City Hall. It would have been some improvements to the lobby and the rear entrance, which is the primary entrance. We've decided to cancel that project altogether. That essentially allowed us to reduce about $6.2 million in the budget for 2425, which then became a resource to be able to push over to 2526 to help fund projects. So, we are going into 2526 with available resources of about $7.4 million. The challenge is that although we have $7.4 million from defunded, delayed, deferred projects, there's two things that we also have to address. Number one, we had anticipated a $10 million transfer from the general fund to the CIP in 2526 as well. Clearly, that's not going to happen, because we're, we're facing a $34 million deficit. One of the strategies was to reduce that transfer from 34- One of the strategies was to reduce that transfer from 34 by 10 million. So that immediately got us from 34 million down to $24 million deficit. But with the 7.4 that we have available, we had about $20.6 million worth of CIP asks, if you will, from different departments throughout the organization. We certainly can't do $20.6 million worth of CIP work with only 7.4 million available. So what we did was, what you see on the rest of this slide, is items that we either withdrew or reduced as part of what a department's ask was. Specifically, the GW, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation, Community Services and Parks, had asked for some landscaping improvements on Bowdrie Boulevard. That's something that we were going to hire a consultant to help design and engineer. That's something that we'll do in-house. So we decided not to move forward with that project. Trail signage master plan, another item we'll do in-house. Elk Mini Park playground replacement, instead of the CIP paying for it out of general fund dollars, we were able to identify a creative way of utilizing Measure A funds to accomplish that. I say creative, it just means we were shifting a number of other things around to free up funds in Measure A to make that happen. Wilson Mini Park playground replacement, another item that we were able to shift to Measure A. And then you see the City Hall, some remaining funds in a different pot for City Hall. And Fairmont Building renovation, that's a building that sits vacant and there's no present plans to reuse it. It's something that we're not going to move forward with at this point. Although we may have a different alternative with that shortly. There was also some items that were reduced, not completely eliminated, specifically ADA facility modifications. We just reduced it by $125,000. I think we have about a half a million dollars a year allocated to that. Again, it's just based on how much work we actually end up doing on an annual basis. So work will continue at the same level it has to date. And then active transportation implementation of about a half a million dollars. The following list of items, and this is the last slide here, is items that we didn't withdraw or delete or reduce, I should say. We merely deferred from 2526, when the departments had asked to move forward with them, to 2627. So we're still going to move forward with these projects pending unavailable budget in 2627. But Shoal Canyon landfill master plan, the Upper Shoal Canyon demolition renovation project, Shoal Canyon Ballfields parking lot repavement, paving condition improvement, this is the citywide pavement condition, tied back to the citywide pavement condition index. This is not the gas tax funds. This was just above and beyond the usual amount that we allocate towards street repaving to maintain our PCI. And then Heat Island effect mitigation improvement. Then we keep seeing that theme of the parking fund continue to show up on slides, based on the fact that we collapsed it. We are moving forward with about $1.35 million worth of parking lot improvements. So based on the deferrals or the eliminations, we were able to reduce the 20.6, $20.6 million department ask down to 12.6 and appropriate about $8 million worth of projects in fiscal year 2526. That way, we still maintain some momentum on our capital improvement program, but we're doing it within our actual means for the current fiscal year. If adopted as proposed, we would end our year with roughly $623,000 deficit, largely larger than last year's. But again, as long as it's within that million dollar mark or under, it's not something that we would be concerned over. We're not going to finish every one of these projects all at the same time before June of 2026. The following set of slides, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel, but I want to provide a little bit of context. What we're going to see is four different types of categories here. We're going to talk about every single project in the CIP that has some level of general fund funding associated with it. So whether it was a previously approved general fund project or a project funded by the general fund, or one that has a new appropriation request, we're going to go through all 38 of those. The reason we're doing that is because I think that one of the previous study sessions, there was a desire by at least one council member to look at everything that's been appropriated and determine whether there is any opportunity to maybe not move forward with a project, free up those funds to help offset some of the budget balancing strategies that we had previously proposed. We're also going to show all CIP...you have a question?
The ones that are marked as, there's no number for the proposed, are you suggesting that we continue on? Or what do the markers mean?
No. I'm not suggesting anything. What I was referencing is, anything that doesn't have an appropriation is a project that's been previously appropriated and approved by council. Some of them, you'll see there's a very small balance left over, which usually indicates that we're nearing completion of that project. There's others where you might see that there was a $200,000 appropriation and that nothing has been spent just yet. Brand lighting renovation, Casa Adobe roofing replacement. The reason we included those is because, I forget which council member it was, but I think there was a desire to see, is there opportunity to look at previously approved projects and free them up, not move forward with them? We're not recommending that, but it is an option available to council in terms of identifying pots of money that haven't been used yet.
So council member...
Included in your balancing strategies, correct?
No.
There's just a list, yeah, okay.
These are all moving forward unless we're told otherwise.
So in addition to that, council member Satya, and when you don't see like $0 for proposed 2526, that means for that particular project, there is a need for additional funding?
But you have funds sitting that are...
Correct.
So this is the nice-to-have list that was...
Well, it depends who you ask.
Okay.
All right. So this is the format that we'll show for any project that has a general fund component to it. Later in the presentation, we'll get to all other funds. So for GWP, for example, none of it is tied back to the general fund. We'll just show the list of projects that have a new appropriation request. Otherwise, we'd be going over, you know, a couple of hundred individual CIP presentations. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Taktalian. Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. So I'll be presenting the next 10 slides, which includes close to 60 projects. Although I am presenting these projects, the CIP encompasses multiple departments, so we have our respective department heads and some of their respective staff. So if there's specific questions on those projects, they're available. But in working with their staff, we capture a lot of that information. So the next three slides are single funding sources through the general fund. Of these 38 projects, 13 are requesting new funding for fiscal year 2526, as indicated by our assistant city manager. So the first one on the list, the Harrow Row Village Senior Housing Project is a 40-unit complex for 100% affordable, which had its ribbon cutting on May 13th. This was recently completed and is intended to be finalized in August.
Mr. Hernandez, one second. Just in the interest of time, the plan was to go over every single one of these projects, but if the desire on the part of council not to cover every single one with the description of the project, on the cost, et cetera, please let us know so we can move this faster.
I don't need to hear every single one.
I think, provided that we just got this information for us to, like, digest it, doesn't need to go through every single one. And then if we have questions with staff, we can come back. And then for the next session, we can give clear direction to staff.
We can do that. Or as the slides are being presented, you can take a look at the list and pick the projects that you're interested in hearing about, and Mr. Hernandez can cover that.
Okay.
Or both.
Or both, yeah. Well, okay, let's...
Yeah, I don't need a line-by-line description. Do my colleagues know. So you don't have to go line by line.
What if you just spoke to the ones that have a lot of funding left over, right? Like the doctor's house, I'm guessing it's...
That was my suggestion, Councilman Satya. Whatever project that you'd like to have questions on, just feel free and we'll respond to.
Why don't you go and then as you're going...
He's not going to go every single one item.
Right.
So I have talking points for every project, so like...
Right, do the doctor's house.
Okay, perfect.
Hit the doctor's house.
This project intends to restore and preserve the doctor's house, addressing structural vulnerabilities, thermite remediation, and modernizing systems. Staff is in the process of finalizing a PSA with our vendor to update the condition assessment report. The report will provide repair recommendations, and once finalized, staff will go for bid of construction for a construction contract. Funding previously provided, approved for this project is for designing construction and will be managed by both Public Works and CSP.
Okay, the next one, ambulance operator dorms.
2700.
At Fire Station 27.
Yes. This project aims to reconfigure and remodel to create restrooms and individual dorms that are gender neutral and to house BLS 27 as a 24-hour staff resource. The current configuration does not allow for the fire department to staff an ambulance for 24 hours at this location due to no sleeping accommodations for the two ambulance operators. The plans are in review with CDD, and the first comments are due back the first week of July.
This is a kind of like a larger issue of like having women, I mean, that's what it is, right? Like we have women and the accommodations are not there.
Male and female dorms, yes, that's part of the project.
Yes.
Yes, next slide. Housing land acquisition.
So this funding allocation are for our former measure S funds, reserved for acquiring land for housing project, which is led by the community development department. So CDD is actively looking for sites and considering a few options to bring back to the council as per the director of community development.
Maryland and Artsch Avenue and Alley Improvement Project, as you may recall, we got direction from council to negotiate the contract amount with two bidders. And that's wrapping up. We should be able to bring that item to council in the next few weeks. Seismic and functional retrofit of fire stations. Again, the funding hasn't been expended or utilized due to reason that we are still working on the master plan for these fire stations, but we have kept the funding in place. As you can imagine, there is a need for the retrofit, and that will happen in the near future. Sports Complex Field 3 artificial turf.
So this project intends to convert existing natural gas baseball fields to multipurpose artificial turf fields with U12 soccer field overlays in the outfield. This project is almost through permitting. Staff plans to bring in construction in November of 2025 and should take approximately two months. Construction is being delayed slightly because there's an existing solar project, but the schedule that was provided for November 25 is pretty conservative.
In addition to that, I skipped over Sports Complex Fields 4 and 5 replacement. There's a request for an additional $2 million.
For what?
Sports Fields 4 and 5.
So this project will construct and replace the turf on 4 and 5, which is at the end of life. The project design RFP is expected to be issued next month. CSP is handling the design phase, and then we'll turn it over to Project, to Public Works to complete the construction.
Is there any other project on this list that you're interested in?
Let's go, let's move forward.
Next slide.
Ask a quick question?
Yes.
So just for me to understand it, life to date, project budget is the total budget that we had. Our remaining budget is, let's say, Maryland Street, it was 9.5, and we still have 8.7. And the last column says, there's a zero, basically. So if we approve it the way it is, that project will not happen, and this funding will go?
No. No, no. That remaining budget will still remain
Okay.
in that account
Okay.
because we have not deleted or canceled that project.
Okay.
It's just that when you don't see a dollar amount in the last column, proposed for 2526, it just means at this point in time, we don't need additional funding to be budgeted for that project.
We don't need additional funding, okay.
And the next slide, you see, these are new projects that we need funding for.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Let's cover the big-ticket items. Active transportation implementation.
So this is the annual implementation project, involves executing improvements outlined in the pedestrian and bicycle master plan to enhance roadway infrastructure, promote safety, and encourage active transportation modes like walking and cycling as part of various CIPs. This funding is a supplemental funding source to other CIPs. Some examples include Locker Center, Wilson and Colorado multimodal, and Catalog in Palacone. This requested funding would be for implementation for additional pedestrian and bicycle transportation plan beyond those already included in current CIPs. The proposed appropriation would be used for the installation of pedestrian crosswalks and flashing beacons on Pacific Avenue and Palm Drive, and for South Verdugo Road and adjacent multimodal improvements.
Next one is the CDD's tenant improvement. This is essentially renovating and remodeling the permit center. It's woefully in need of updating, and especially in light of the electronic submittals portal that CDD has implemented. There's a need for reconfiguring the entire floor, if you would, actually, the west side of that floor. And there's potential to create some additional space to be able to bring staff in from other departments to help with the permit center. Parking structure improvements, $1 million.
So staff has identified two projects for this funding. First is equipment improvements and replacement at all downtown Glendale structures. The second project is the creation of a fire evacuation plans to obtain compliance with the fire department. This includes creating braille signage, general signage, and graphs and exit route, sorry. Staff is evaluating the elevator improvements at the downtown structure as well, if additional funding is available.
Next slide. These are multiple funding sources, but includes a general fund.
Over the ones that only have the general fund part of?
Sure.
Just to save time, because what we're trying to like cover, right? So, for example, Elk Mini Park has CDBG and Measure A.
Right.
I mean...
Understood. Okay.
So all these have general fund dollars allocated, so go over all four of these projects, just to be clear?
So the next few slides, I just want to clarify, because it can get confusing. The next few slides will show, we already talked about all the projects that had single general fund source funding. The next few slides will show all projects that have multiple funding sources, where general fund is just a component of it.
Correct. So I'm saying, in order for us to save time, for you to only go through the ones that have the general fund as part of the source?
Yeah, so that'll be the next few slides.
So all of, essentially all of them have a component of, well, I shouldn't say majority.
Like Elk Mini Park Playground as an example, I'm just looking at, I don't know. Same with Wilson.
So I would say also, these projects have been previously approved, so there's no funding request for fiscal year 2526. So do you want to focus on those, or I have descriptions for each of these?
I think if I may, I understand the question. I think we can go as far as slide 13, because after slide 13, anything else is multiple funding sources, but there is no general fund. So we can stop at slide 13 if that's the preference of the council.
Go back to slide 11.
Okay. All right. So I'll start with the first one, the central.
Again, in the interest of time, so we don't have to read the scope of work for every single project.
Yes, these are more just updates on the project. So the...
Briefly, Daniel, briefly.
I don't need to hear these. I know these projects.
So I continue?
Do you guys need to hear the, so he's describing the projects that are listed? Do you need to hear them?
I think I jumped ahead and, like, Locker Center, I have your rehabilitation project. They ask us $3 more million?
Your microphone's not on. Your microphone's not on.
Sorry.
May I ask what slide you're on?
13.
13.
From Measure R region... From Measure R Regional, correct.
Okay.
Go back to slide eleven. Central Park, you all are aware of the status of that project. No new funding is requested or proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six. Fremont Park is at the last phase of its construction. Should have the ribbon cutting fairly soon. Rock Haven, we still have almost $7 million left in that account. You have awarded, authorized the award of a contract for certain improvements. Next slide. Grandview Building, some minor modification. Land acquisitions for a new park, we have $6,000 allocated, sorry, six million allocated for the future purchase of land for park space. Natural gas, grass at the Pacific Park, Pacific Edison, again, replacement. These all have been approved, next slide. La Cre Santa Avenue is under construction, proposing $3 million again for Measure R Regional return. Pedestrian bike plan implementation, not requesting any new funding. 1.5 million in Measure M local return. Verdugo Park renovations, again, is in the works, next slide. Elk Many Park, these don't have general fund components. Next slide. I'm looking at big-ticket items. Measure W is to capture treat stormwater annual, on an annual basis, 1.3 million. Comes out of Measure W. And Prop C local return for the transportation center upgrades, 1.3 million, next.
So these next five items are all associated with our contractual services and are, are based on contracts, whether either on-call or existing agreements that we have with different vendors. Is there any questions on any, any specific one? I'm happy to answer those.
None from me.
Regarding the sewer fund, the first two are the high-ticket items. The Hyperion, which is, together with 21 other cities, we share in the cost sharing because of the, of the treatment plant, and this is the money that's being budgeted based on Glendale's portion. The Lagwarp project is a little more involved. That is a 50/50 cost sharing, although there is some disputes on some of the CIPs. That, that's why the number is so high there, but we still need the additional appropriation for this year for what we have agreed to. And then the other, the other two are also, the other two are just annual programs. The last item that I will be presenting is the backup generator at Integrated Waste. That is needed during the windstorms.
Okay, Daniel, we don't need to go through every single one of these. Are there any questions of any of these?
No, let's keep rolling.
Enterprise, let's keep rolling, next.
Twelve o'clock is the drop.
Next.
That, that actually concludes Public Works' portion of it.
I'm happy to click, though.
What's that?
I'm happy to click.
Yeah, the rest is going to be GWP. If I'm reading the room right, there's, I'm not seeing a desire to go through GWP's projects. There's quite a number of them here on the electric and water side. If there are any specific questions, Scott Mellon, acting director of GWP, can come up and answer them.
Councilmember Astutarian?
Just a suggestion, and I want to see how we can do this, both saving time here and in preparation for the adoption. I think there's a lot here. Is there an opportunity for us to go and do our own homework and be able to send in our recommendations and have that be part of the packet for the next session?
Councilmember Astutarian, so as long as all that information is sent in and collected and then presented to the public, yeah, and staff can't do anything, staff can't make recommendations based on what's in there, for example.
What staff can do is align, like if there are four or five council members, just like how Mr. Calvert does it when he like reads it back to us, could that be part of just the report that comes? I'm just trying to figure out how we have these meeting discussions while also being efficient with our time here and making the recommendations, because there's a lot here that was, that was presented, and I-
I, I understand, yes, there's, it's a, it's a large amount of data, completely understood. It's challenging if we leave it up to individual council members to send their recommendations. Let's assume we get recommendations on changes from one council member. That doesn't mean that we can adjust these numbers based on one or two council members' recommendations. So it will have to come back to a council meeting for discussion, deliberations, so that we get direction from the majority of council on these singular items.
I'm not looking for it to be that you take that and make it as part of your final adoption based off of the email that was sent. I'm saying for, between now and the, the twelfth session, if we were to submit something, because we're going to have deliberations and conversations on the twelfth, if that conversation can already be provided as part of a packet, so we're not starting from scratch here and are able to give the feedback for these items if we have recommendations.
Perhaps.
Because that would speed, that would speed up time for conversation here, and-
I'm trying to square that away in my mind in terms of how that could actually work, and I keep running into brown act issues, and maybe you're thinking the same thing, but I think perhaps what we can do is we, we could dedicate the first portion of our final follow-up study session to CIP. What I would look for is some direction from council, however, is it, do you, do we want to go over just the list of the CIP projects that have general fund component funding? Now that you've had an opportunity to see this, if you want to have conversations with budget staff or department heads specifically that oversee those projects to get some clarification, we can dedicate about an hour's worth, at least, to a conversation specific to CIP on the twelfth.
According to Mr. Garcia, there wouldn't, if, if it was part of, if we submitted it, and if it was part of the packet, it wouldn't be a brown act, because you're not, I'm not asking for you guys to take any direction from that, I'm not asking for any of that. I'm just trying to gauge a conversation, and I think ultimately, I think the first question I should have is to my colleagues, if there is an interest in doing your own homework and, you know, providing a list, or if you are, if there is interest in, instead of making certain cuts to look at these projects and say, hey, you know what? Instead, we want to take away some of these projects that we have allocated funding to and save some of the cuts that were recommended by staff.
If I, if I may address that, yeah, and I apologize, maybe it was being a little bit too, just speaking to it just at a high level, but it seems very problematic from the brown act perspective, as well as just sort of how we, how we do it, because, for example, even if council members were to send in, kind of, just, and we tabulate, staff tabulated what the, what the results are and presented it as part of the packet, that could be all kind of, you know, council member might favor a project, but not, but at a different level than a different council member. That deliberation really should take place here at the council meeting. I think the best that you can probably do is have, you know, take this information back and be ready to discuss it, but the, the whole purpose of, of having this as part of deliberative processes is so that the public can hear what it is that, that you are thinking in terms of these projects.
I, I thought there would be deliberation at that meeting, I'm just, again, just trying to be organized for that meeting.
And I think the way to do that then is to, just for council members who want to, who want to have that preparation, do so in advance of the meeting. My other concern frankly is, some council members may send in very detailed notes on what they want, and other council members send in either nothing at all or send something very high level, expecting there to be a discussion, and then maybe being frustrated at the level of detail that was or was not discussed through these, through this packet of materials.
I think everything should go through the city manager at this point, if there are questions, rather than, I guess the, the term "do your homework" is a little scary. I mean, I wouldn't want to contact Mr. Mellon on the side and say, hey, can we shave from this, from this project and add it to over here? Because it puts him in an unusual situation where he's speaking to a council member, and he's under a particular pressure, if you will, as to trying to always please council. He's hearing from one. I think everything should be funneled, any additional questions should all be funneled through the city manager, where he can make, understand what the request is, and see if there's any feasibility to propose something to council at the time we discuss it.
Mayor, when I was saying "do your homework," I was actually referring to just asking additional questions about the project and not going to individual staff members and getting them to say, you know, if the shift would work or not, just, I think I was just trying to save time from-
I think it should all go through the city manager.
And would be happy to respond to any and all of your questions between now and the next meeting.
Well, I for one have an interest in looking at some of these projects and coming back and saying, hey, let's put this one on hold, or I've recommended in the past, some of them that you already have proposed to put on hold, how much more of a cost is it going to add if we don't move forward with it? Because cost of construction is also going up and other financing opportunities we may have with that, so.
That, I mean, I think that, that's valid, and that should, should go through the city manager for filtering.
Agreed, all right, next.
We'll go ahead and invite Shay Eccleston-Bowler, our interim. I'm going to let him introduce himself, interim something. He's going to take over the fleet conversation. Everyone's in interim something. Acting, acting, acting interim.
More about the work, less about the titles.
That's right.
Yeah, again Shay, hold on one second. In the interest of time, what's the intent of presenting this? If this has been presented previously in, in some shape and form?
The intent behind this, again, was, again, request from council, at least, at least one council member, to learn a little bit more about the fleet program and the actual purchases that we're making. This should be a fairly quick presentation. We'll talk about how we go about making those purchases and what we're purchasing for next year in categorical terms, not specific terms.
This is page seventeen, eighteen.
We did this recently.
Nineteen.
Can I, can I just ask a question on this before you move forward?
Yes.
Does this, I know we're going through a process for our transportation and routes and so forth.
Transit, our B-line buses, right, yeah.
Right? If there is, are we aligning this with that other report that's supposed to come? Or, just as an example, if you're going to come back and say, hey, we're going to cut this route and we want smaller, we don't need the big bus, we need something smaller, but then you go and buy some big buses now that we have to end up using, how does that, how do you, how do you schedule these?
So our plan for the bus electrification is separate from-
The electrification purchase.
Just in general, fleet.
So that's what he'll get into in terms of our, our replacement plan, and what vehicles are out, are required per the regulations.
The question is, where is this, what's the status of that operation plan?
So right, right now, we are in the outreach phase, so I can provide a more updated schedule to the council and when we come back for our first check-in point with the city council.
So whatever purchase of equipment, including buses that are included in the fleet fund, because of the infancy of the, this plan, this is just for one year after. So when we come back to council in the future years, it will be based on the outcome of that survey.
Okay.
Because that survey is not complete. Any other questions on the fleet fund? And, and if it was one council member's desire, we can always schedule a meeting with a particular-
We can't hear what, what this, few, few, it's eleven o'clock, we still have time. We can't hear what this few slides are?
I'm okay with hearing it.
What do we have ahead of us?
I can be here all day.
In terms of-
We'll be talking, after this, we'll be talking about parking fees, potential parking tax, because the two are tied, and then revenue generating, the revenue generating options we've discussed previously. We'll want to end with some direction on how to move forward for our follow-up meeting.
We're going to have to go through this quickly. You guys can carry on, at twelve o'clock, I have to go.
Understood, right.
So my name is Shay Eccleston-Bowler, Public Works Administrator/Deputy Director of Public Works, and I appreciate the opportunity to present the Public Works Department Fleet Services capital outlay budget to the Glendale City Council. We are made up of four maintenance garages located throughout the city. So there's the mechanical maintenance garage, which is at the Public Works Corporation yard, GWP garage, Civic Center garage, and the fire garage. We support nearly every department and operation in the city. We purchase and maintain vehicles and equipment that are used to respond to emergencies, to maintain utilities and infrastructure, to deliver meals and books. And fleet services staff also purchase fuel, and we maintain the city's fueling facilities and storage tanks. The only assets that we don't maintain is transit and the helicopter. Fleet expenditures are proportionally charged out annually to departments based on the cost of the services that we provide. The work and productivity of fleet maintenance technicians are tracked by our Faster Fleet Management software. And so then we take the asset and work order data from this system along with the financials from our Munis financial system, and those are used to calculate annual chargeouts to our customer departments. Separate of that, vehicles and capital assets are depreciated by the finance department so that we have the resources to purchase replacement equipment when they meet the end of their useful life. So what's new in fleet management? Obviously, the advanced clean fleet regulations that began last year. Glendale is following the default ZEV purchase option, whereby 50% of our non-exempt fleet purchases in twenty-five and twenty-six need to be zero emission, and then 100% from 2027 moving forward. So these regulations have been in the news a lot recently with the change in the White House. Essentially, a lot of stuff has happened this year. In January, CARB, the California Air Resources Board, announced that it withdrew, withdrew its request for an EPA waiver to implement ACF rules related to drainage operators and high-priority fleet owners. So they will not have to comply with ACF. More recently, the US Senate actually voted to revoke existing EPA waivers. According to CARB, this does not directly impact the ACF rule that applies to local governments and states. Our only concern is what this will do to the market for zero-emission vehicles. Here is a, a copy of our certificate from last year. The plan that we have to present you will also comply going forward. We also consult with our fleet electrification study. This was last approved by council in January. How we purchase vehicles, this slide here outlines the process. So we have a 15-point system that is under our Faster Fleet Management software. We get five points for the age of the vehicles, five points for maintenance costs, and five points for meter. Meter would be either mileage or hours, depending on the equipment. So we take this report from Faster, we meet with our customer departments, we get their feedback, we check our state regulations, we check the fleet electrification study, we present our recommendation to the city manager. He makes his changes, and then it's ultimately included in the budget for adoption.
On this slide, as you can see, there are a total of 75 requests. As Mr. Eccleston mentioned, this has been scaled down significantly.
Yes.
Next.
Okay. So here is the cost of all those requests, 13.7 across all funds. The fleet fund portion is little over- is little over $6 million. Here, you can see the breakdown by department. So like the GWP, 4.6, they pay for it themselves with the water and power funds.
Okay, next.
So this slide shows the electric portion. Thirty-five out of 70 are zero emission. Seven out of 14 ACF eligible ones are zero emission, so we're complying with the regulation. And they're all electric. We're not buying any other zero emission. That's it.
No questions, I see.
Mr. Garbichin?
Yeah. When you said regulations, which regulations are you referring to?
So in addition to ACF, for example, we are not allowed as municipal agencies to buy diesel refuse trucks because of previous regulations. So, you know, under ACF, that is a non-exempt vehicle class. It's subject to the 50%, but we can still buy CNG. We cannot buy diesel. So by previous regulations, I'm talking about early 2000s, when we were first barred from buying diesel vehicles.
Yeah, but we don't have any diesel vehicles at this time, do we? On the refuse side?
We do. Our fire trucks are diesel powered.
Yes, we absolutely have diesel vehicles. You can, and we're planning on purchasing diesel vehicles, six of them. We purchase diesel fuel. We have diesel fuel tanks.
They're very unique pieces of equipment you'll see on the right bottom, bottom right corner of it. Ambulance, emergency response, fire engine, mowers, and wheel loaders. Very limited circumstances where alternatives don't necessarily readily exist.
On page 24, you said 50% of non-exempt fleet purchases. Can you speak to that, please? And what regulations from '25, '26?
So this is the infancy of this regulation. And so CARB has looked at, you know, this applies to all vehicles, 8500, GBWR, and higher, right? And so in the early stages of this regulation, they've exempted a lot of vehicles that are above that weight. And so a lot of the vehicles that we are purchasing next year are not zero emission because they've been exempted by CARB. Now, we expect as, you know, this legislation ages, there's going to be fewer and fewer exemptions.
All right, let's move on.
If there are no additional questions on this particular segment, we can jump right into the first of our revenue generating, potential revenue generating ideas, or options, I should say. I'm going to turn over to Tad Dombrovsky from our Public Works Department. He'll talk specifically about parking fees and potential parking tax based on a parking study that we started last year and finished up mid-year this year.
Good morning, Mayor Najari and council members. Today I'm here to present a proposal to adjust the city's parking rates. An update that supports our ongoing parking management strategy while reflecting current conditions in the local market. The last time parking rates were increased was in 2019. We introduced framework to gradually align parking prices with convenience and demand. The principle behind this is straightforward. The most convenient spaces on-street, near popular destinations are the most expensive, and priced at a premium, while less convenient options like the parking garages that are further away would be less, would be less expensive. In addition to demand and convenience, it's important to consider market rates set by the private parking operators in Glendale as well. These facilities provide a useful benchmark for what customers are willing to pay and help ensure our pricing remains competitive and realistic. As you're aware, COVID-19 had a significant impact on parking operations. In Glendale specifically, parking garage gates were lifted, meter payment and enforcement were held off on and suspended. Many spaces were converted for temporary curbside pickup, delivery zones, and outdoor dining. As we've emerged from the pandemic, most of those temporary changes have been phased out, and our parking operations have transitioned to meet the post-COVID environment. Today we have an opportunity to continue advancing our original pricing strategy, aligning the parking rates with convenience and demand while maintaining affordability where appropriate. So Brand Boulevard remains the primary downtown corridor and continues to experience the highest parking demand with the most limited supply. Please note, the number 204 is from Colorado up to the 134 and does not include some of the temporary things like the alfresco dining and that, that sort of thing. So it's even more limited than that. It's probably under 200 spaces that we have there. Nearby spaces and on-street spaces and city-owned surface lots offer slightly less convenient but greater availability. And then the city's three public garages downtown offer the greatest capacity and are slightly less convenient due to their location. It remains important to keep the garage rates lower to encourage their use and maintain a pricing structure that reflects relative convenience. Okay, to that end, the following park read adjustments are being proposed. Increasing the hourly rate on Brand Boulevard from $2 to $3, and the rate for on-street spaces and the city-owned surface lots from $150 to $2 per hour. These updates align with the strategic goal of matching price with demand and convenience. They also help promote higher turnover in the most in-demand areas, improving access for more users. Additionally, these rates are consistent with what neighboring cities are charging. Burbank, for example, recently introduced paid parking in their downtown at a rate of $2 per hour. For the city-owned garages, the following parking rates adjustment are being proposed. Increasing the monthly parking rate used primarily by local employees from $70 to $90 per month, and increasing the maximum daily rate from $9 to $12 per month, or per day. A recent market survey found the average monthly rate in nearby private garages is approximately $95. Even with the proposed increase, the $90 monthly rate would remain below market. Similarly, the average daily maximum rate in comparable private garages is nearly $15, meaning our new daily rate would continue to be among the most affordable in the downtown area. These proposed changes are grounded in our broader parking management goals, supporting turnover in high-demand areas and maintaining affordability in less convenient facilities. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Broughtman?
It's, Councilmember Broughtman, great question. It's not as simple and straightforward as it seems. The, in some, for instance, at the Marketplace Garage, that, that parking garage was developed for, at the same time that the tenant base across the street was. So all of them have been given a two-hour free validation. So it would really have almost no impact. As a matter of fact, a lot of the tenants don't use the validation because we give 90 minutes free. So some of those customers would pay us a dollar if they stayed between 90 minutes and 120 minutes because they aren't using a validation. If we implement, if we reduce that amount at all, all of those tenants in the Marketplace area are entitled to a validation for two hours.
So it looks like we should stick with the 90 minutes.
All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Broughtman.
So the proposed or projected increase, say we agree to move forward with these strategies, are they accounted for in your projected budget as you've presented?
No.
Okay, so I think I had said this during the first session, where as we're going through possible revenue generating opportunities, for us to also align these with the cuts that are being recommended and looking at, you know, say, okay, if we're approving this, then it gives us the opening to not cut somewhere else, right? It's kind of a, how do we end up balancing it or trying to avoid further cuts?
I totally understand where you're coming from. I think the challenge here becomes the fact that even if you had these, you would still have to make cuts because you're running such a significant deficit. So right now, we're at 13.7 million dollar deficit.
Right, so we're only going through parking now, but we're going to go through revenue generation as well.
Once, because we didn't have direction from council, we don't have these numbers without it. But once we get approval from council, it will be accounted for.
Once we get approval from council, then this will be accounted for in the budget forecast.
Thank you.
All right. Tad, next.
Next, parking tax?
Yes.
Okay, the next topic for discussion is potential implementation of a parking tax in the city of Glendale. In simple terms, a parking tax is a levy applied to the gross receipts by private parking operations. To thoroughly evaluate both the feasibility and revenue of a potential tax, Public Works and Finance Departments collaborated closely, engaging two independent consultants to provide expert analysis and modeling. The first consultant was a firm with expertise in the parking industry. They conducted a comprehensive rate analysis of the parking garages operating within Glendale. After completing their analysis, they developed a revenue estimate that blended an average of monthly and visitor rates, aligned with currently, current industry standard, then applied building occupancy rates to arrive at a preliminary projection. Based on a proposed tax rate of 10%, their analysis estimates potential revenue of 2.2, at 2.2 million at current occupancy levels, ramping up to about 3 million once building occupancy levels increase. The second consultant, HDL, took that foundational rate analysis a step further. They applied a robust scenario modeling approach, running over 50,000 randomized simulations. These tested variations in parking rates, demands, and other key economic factors to determine a probable revenue range. They focused on the ratio of daily parkers to monthly parkers using both high and low estimates to capture, capture a realistic approach of potential outcomes. Their rate, also based on the 10%, would fall between 2.7 and 3.4 million annually, slightly higher than the original estimate. It's important to note that several cities already impose parking taxes, though the structures and rates vary considerably from 10% up to 25%. For instance, Burbank is set at 12%, but they also exempt properties where 90% of the rentable space is dedicated to medical use. These nuances would need to be considered in crafting our own policy. From an administrative standpoint, the cost would be minimal. However, it's crucial to emphasize a ballot measure would be required before any parking tax could be formally adopted and implemented. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Questions?
No questions.
On the tax, Mr. Garbichin?
Can you give us an example of parking structures that they're private and we may want to tax them?
Parking tax would be applicable to all private parking garages, whether it's any of the office buildings downtown, the Americana, anyone who collects revenue for parking privately.
Okay. And we are going to estimate how much they're going to generate, or we are going to ask them to provide accounting for every year?
They would have to provide accounting every year.
Okay, thanks.
And that is imposed, if we go that way, that's imposed by a vote of the council and a levying of the tax, or is there additional voter approval? Oh, that's a ballot. I missed that part. Okay. Okay, any other questions on that? All right, thank you.
All right, moving forward. The rest of these are slides that you've already seen. We've had some in-depth conversation, not just this year, but last year as well, on potential expense offsets or new revenue sources. We won't go into anywhere near the level of depth that Tad just did with the parking tax. We did that because it's a new conversation we haven't had before. So I'll look for a little bit of guidance from the mayor in terms of how in-depth would you like me to go if we've already talked about these? Just touch on them?
I think you better touch on them.
Okay. With respect to a quarter cent sales tax, we have an opportunity to put that on the ballot. If it were to be adopted by the, by the residents, it's a general tax, it would require a simple majority. It could generate somewhere between eight and 10 million dollars. We've discussed business license taxes before. We've looked at different models. Different cities around us have the same, have different models, in fact, Burbank, Pasadena, LA. If we were to apply some of those same methodologies, we could potentially generate somewhere between 2.1 and 4.8 million dollars a year. Parking tax we just discussed. Transfer tax, and on the next slide, you see a parcel tax. I'll kind of combine those together. We did talk about those last year. There was quite a bit of opposition to both of those. So I don't know if we want to spend too much time on these. If there was a desire to talk about either of those in much more detail, I would recommend that we bring that back as a separate conversation. We have our consultants from HDL who can help model this out and show the different alternatives that exist. But with respect to a transfer tax, somewhere between 3.4 and 13.4 million dollars, as well as a parcel tax that could generate somewhere between 20 and 30. But in order to do that, you see that the rates would have to be somewhere between 211 and 13, $317 a parcel for residential, all the way up to 1,000 to 2,300 for multifamily commercial. Hotel tax, otherwise known as a transportation, transit occupancy tax, would generate about almost a million to about two and a half million dollars depending on what our rate moves to. Our current rate's at about 12%. Other agencies around us are somewhat close. Burbank's a little lower at 10, Pasadena's at about 12. And you see Anaheim, Malibu at 15, but those are both destination spots, slightly different than, than the environment you find here in Glendale. Commercial vacancy tax, I'll speak about in a little bit of detail because I think this may be the first time we're hearing about this officially. This essentially would be a tax on commercial vacant, vacant properties. The primary reason, goal behind it would be multifaceted. First, it really is intended to address prolonged vacancies. It's intended to incentivize properties to be reactivated so they're not deteriorating and slowing down sort of the, the natural growth in a particular area. That, with that comes a revitalization of your, your economics in that particular region. It reduces neighborhood deterioration, and of course, it could generate funding depending on how you decide to utilize those funds. Funds can go directly into your general fund for general purposes, or you can utilize that to offset something like, I don't know, a first-time home buyers program, for example, or something different that's somewhat associated. I will say that some agencies have done this, but they've also been challenged. I think San Francisco is facing a challenge on theirs. It's in the First District Court of Appeals right now, being challenged under a takings doctrine. So we'll see how that ultimately comes out in time. But I'll also note that as of February 2025, there was some state legislation proposed. I believe it's SB 789, that if the legislature were to approve it, could implement a vacancy tax across the state. We're watching that closely as well. There had previously been discussion about, you know, potential revenue associated with delaying the closure of the Schulkany Landfill. I will just make it very clear at this point that that is not an option. The reason why the landfill was closing, based on the resolution that council adopted, was because it would reach capacity. Any extension of that timeline would require an expansion of the landfill, and that's just not a conversation that's, that's being had at the council level at this stage. EV charges in the public right-of-way. We talked about this earlier. We're currently working a multi-department effort on an RFP for some revenue sharing opportunities in that regard. We just talked about increasing parking fees. Public safety impact fee. Actually, maybe I should stop there. You see our community development director sitting here. He can talk about the next set, starting with public safety impact fee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. We did look into a public safety impact fee. We estimated about $45,000 per year would be generated from that. We pulled 2024 calendar year permits. The reason why that number is much lower than, say, the Burbank five-year average is that we get a lot of permits for tenant improvements, for home renovations, things of that nature. We typically do not charge those fees for those kind of projects. During the five-year run, Burbank permitted and entitled and issued permits for several large multifamily projects. I would argue that Burbank probably would not have a number that high every year going forward, and we would only see our number significantly go up if we saw large developments come in. So 2024 was a relatively busy year for us, but we did not see major developments pull permits at that time, so that number was relatively muted. For the concierge fee, this is actually something council has already approved before. We came with our process improvements earlier this year and talked about bringing our concierge team into a more focused environment. That would include a fee-based system as well as a program that may benefit smaller businesses that would be free. That's going to come back to council here in the next couple of months. We generate, we expect to generate somewhere between a half a million and a million if we turn that into a fee-based system. Digital billboards, that's something we are coming back to council with in early July. That was something the council already directed us to take a look at and develop potential regulations and then discuss, discuss the opportunities for revenue. That would be limited and focused, focused right now on city. That would be limited and focused right now on city or government-owned properties along the freeway and consideration, depending on council's perspective and direction, on commercial properties on two primary corridors, that being Brandon Central. Again, we'll come back with regulations around that, and you'll have the opportunity to provide input, direction, and vote on whether or not you would like to go beyond just billboards along the freeway. A couple of items that are in here, restaurants in the park. You'll see most of these on this slide here. TBD in terms of revenue, and that's for a number of different reasons. We could move forward with an RFP for restaurants in the park. What I would caution on that is we would not expect to generate a lot of revenue. You're also going to compromise the amount of green space you have, and you're also going to need more parking in there. If this is something council is interested in, I would suggest and recommend that that goes to the bottom of the list. It's a large effort with not a significant return on investment. Digital kiosks and signs been brought up. Essentially, these are digital signs that would be along the right-of-way, along the curbside, that have digital advertising, provide Wi-Fi. What we've learned from most of the companies is that we would not achieve high enough saturation. Our assumption is for the quality of life and the environment of some of the neighborhoods, we wouldn't want to see these in places like Kenneth Village or Montrose. It's more of a downtown item. And we don't, most of the companies don't believe they could put enough in place to justify having those. So we don't really see that as a likely opportunity. The ice skating rink, that is something we're currently in discussions in. Transfer development rights would be something we would like to get direction back from council. This is the idea that we take untapped potential in city lots that we don't want to develop or on other city-owned properties that could then be sold off to other private developers who could add on development capacity. Transfer density between property owners is one that was also brought up. That is not something that would typically generate revenue for the city. We could tax it, but we would not see a substantial amount of money come in. And we would also dilute the ability to get the maximum impact from the transfer of development rights on city-owned properties because now we've saturated the market with too many alternatives. There's also the opportunity to negotiate some of the existing leases. We have a lot of different city properties, a lot of different tenants that are in there, and some of those leases could be brought closer to market. Many of them are subsidized. And depending on your direction on art stock, that would also depend on, would inform what we would do with those five, six retail spaces we have there. Currently, those are under a creative program, where we only charge a dollar per year on those. So those could be revenue-generating spaces. And then ultimately, the ground leasing city property. This is something that we have discussed before. We would anticipate generating somewhere between $3 and $7 million per year, depending on how those leases are structured and when those returns come in. This is money that we could see kind of spread out over a longer period of time. Staff's recommendation is that if this is something council wants to move forward with, we take one of the smaller properties that we have in an area such as downtown. So it would be a buy-right project. Lot number four, directly behind Alex Theater, would be a good opportunity. This would provide the council their opportunity to give us your direction in terms of the community benefits you would like to see in that because the beauty in the ground leasing is not only do we get the revenue, but you also have essentially control over what could be there, what kind of benefits are put into it. Do we want to keep parking, maintain that revenue? Do you want to see a community benefit put into the building? Are you prioritizing housing versus hotels, hotels versus housing, things of that nature? But we do recommend starting with a smaller site in downtown so that we can see exactly how these work without having a significant impact like maybe some of our other larger lots would. I believe that concludes my portion of this.
Mayor, take a break here, and if there are any questions on this list of potential... Would you like us to weigh in on some of those in a quick manner?
If I may, three of them that would be of importance for us would be the, or really two, be transfer development rights and the ground leasing city property. As I stated, we're coming back with digital billboards. Ice skating is already in the rink, or already in the mix. Mix those words up a little bit. But the ground leasing city property would require the release of an RFP that obviously council would need to review. The transfer of development rights would need a certain set of administrative rights to go along with it, but our staff is prepared to return in July and August with both of those programs if council gives us the direction to move forward. They both would generate significant revenue.
Repeat those last two?
The transfer of development rights and the ground leasing city property.
The ground lease, okay. Okay, Ms., let me start from Mr. Garbajin's side and come around.
Okay. So on ground lease of city properties, some of these properties, they need to have a zone change. And some of them are in downtown that are already buy-right, that you mentioned. I think we need to start from the downtown locations and look at what we want over there. And I mentioned this before, some cities, they program these lots and get entitlements for it, or they say, okay, this is the number of units you can build in here with commercial or what have you. Then the developers will come in, and based on that, you can determine how much can you charge for the ground lease. So I think the properties that are in downtown, I'm willing to look at and see if you want to lease it, what the potential would be. And if you want to get an appraisal, we can do that. But outside downtown area, at this time, I'm not in favor of it.
How about anything else? You just want to touch base on those?
On the...
And then we have, what I'd like to do is go through, discuss these offsets, recognize the speaker, and perhaps have a wrap-up.
Are you talking about the only, the slide 42? Or like parcel tax and transfer tax?
I guess, starting with 39.
Right.
With page 39.
We'd like to hear your comments.
Okay, so on page 39, business tax, license tax. When you go to non-residential rentals, is $19 a square foot per year? Is that what it is? It's the second item on that page for non-residential rentals.
Can you repeat that question, please?
So on 39, where it says business license tax?
Business license tax?
The rate.
The rate.
The rates are explained, that's the question.
The third line, it says $19.84, $19.84 per thousand square foot. Is this per thousand square foot a year?
Yes.
On non-residential rentals. So if it's a commercial property, we charge them at $19 a year per thousand square foot of property they own? Let's say if they have 10,000 square feet, that's...
$200 bucks, $2,000.
That's for rental. Right, because there's, right the line above it, that's for businesses.
No, I understand. If you have a shopping center, it's 10,000 square feet, right? You're charging $19 per thousand square foot per year?
Yes. In this particular example, that's accurate. What, like I said earlier, if there is a desire to get into the specifics of any of these, like the business license tax, the parcel tax, or the transfer tax, I would highly recommend that we have our consultants here because they use a very specific model to extrapolate the potential revenue. In this particular instance, for the business license tax, in order to generate somewhere between $2.1 million and $4.8 million, you would essentially charge somewhere between $37 and $247 per employee on average, and based on our population, that's what it would generate. Or you can go $19.84 per thousand square foot of non-residential rentals. We know roughly how many square feet of that we have, and that's probably how we came with the $4.8 million. So this is just examples of the different models that you can apply to generate revenue under a business license structure.
So our request today is, if there is an appetite on behalf of council, to explore any of these options in more detail.
I'm not in favor of the business license tax, transfer tax, and parcel tax. Commercial vacancy tax, I mean, who would want to have a commercial building and keep it vacant if there is a vacancy? You have to know, how long has it been vacant? What is it? We say if it's more than a year or more than six months. And I think we're getting really into the, we're diving deep into people's property rights, if you will, because, again, we have to understand what that means, commercial vacancy tax. Is it vacant for six months?
That's a fair point.
There must be a reason, because if I have a property, why would I want to rent it?
That's a fair point, Councilmember Garbajin. Again, if there is a desire on part of the council to explore these, then we'd like to hear that. If not, then we'll just drop it from the list.
But what if I own commercial property? Let's talk about conflicts. I know I'm not very successful in discussing that with Mr. Garcia, but on conflicts, when we're talking about gross sales, let's say I do business in Glendale. I have a business. I pay parking in a structure. I may have commercial property. Am I in any way precluded? Is there a public general exception? Or should we err on the side of caution and get an FPPC opinion? That is a legitimate question that I'm asking.
Okay, so not having all the facts, if there is, if there is a concern that anybody on the council has commercial, owns commercial property that would be subject to that potential tax, should maybe ask to have that discussion first, and then step out, and then come back? Or we can, and then we can ask for that FPPC opinion if we're going to have that discussion. This is a very high level. It's just whether or not to ask staff to bring back more information. But again, yeah, without having the facts, I can't really give an opinion.
I'm just going to be very open about it. We have one colleague that is in commercial real estate, right? And so even at this stage, having a conversation, I recognize it's overarching. I just want to make sure that there isn't a conflict of interest on that. Or, and again, if there's any other that any one of us are impacted, we should not be driving even conversation, is what I feel. I don't know what the rules are, I just...
Fair question, but just a follow-up on that. How about the parcel tax? Many of us own properties here. If you approve or disapprove of parcel tax, it's going to affect your property as well. How about that conflict of interest? Or transfer tax? If you sell your...
Perhaps.
If you sell your property, that's a parcel tax, right? So is that a general rule?
Likely the parcel tax is public generally because of the number of residential parcels in the city. I can't speak to, again, I can't speak to any particular tax other than that, so... Yeah, council members, urge to exercise caution if they believe they have a financial interest that's implicated by one of the...
Yeah, I mean, I do business in the city. I have a law practice.
Yeah.
So do I, I have a business too.
You know, but I'm not sure that's a public general situation where so many people, the public, would share that sort of burden. So I would like to know, before I say that I hate a business license tax, whether I can say that I hate a business license tax.
Understood.
So maybe we should... I know, how would you advise us to go forward?
I think at this point, if it's a concern, Mayor Giantson, then don't participate in that particular part of the discussion. The other idea is just ask staff to bring back more information on all these options. I know that wasn't really, I know the city manager is hoping to, you know, reduce the number of asks, but...
I understand. So should I refrain, when it comes to my time, should I just refrain from addressing those?
Sure, if you own commercial property. And I don't think, I don't think anybody that leases property or has that particular financial interest that's implicated. I think that it's a tax on people who own commercial property and keep it vacant for a certain period of time.
It impacts an entire industry.
Understood, that's not really...
Property and...
Understood, that particular is not the conflict that's at issue.
Okay, well, to the extent you feel comfortable, Mr. Garbajin, have you addressed the issues that you want to address?
I addressed my issues, but one last question I have on this issue is, has this issue been vetted out in the last 30 years? Because every council member who sat here and voted on the budget for last 30 years, one way or the other, they either had a business in the city, they either had a property in the city, they had maybe apartment buildings in the city or commercial properties. How come this issue's never been discussed? So we would have a clear direction today. And that's a question for city attorney. I mean, this is...
Very valid point.
Something that, you know, we're talking about, and I'm okay with either way. I mean, yeah, I'm in the business, I'm in the commercial real estate business. I don't own commercial properties, but in general, even owning a property and you vote for a parcel tax, I know it's a general rule, but none of these issues been, I don't remember ever been discussed. And if that was a, that's a legal issue today, it should have been a legal issue 10 years ago. Why hasn't been an issue in decades?
Well, let's look forward prospectively.
I know, but that's a legit question.
Well, I mean, just for example, when we were talking about rent control or rent, whatever, I was recusing myself at that time.
Talking about budgets?
Well, anyway, let's, we're going to look to our city attorney to give us some guidance on that as to how comfortable he would advise us to partake or to request opinions. Mr., should we go to our speaker? I feel, I feel bad, you've been sitting here.
I think we should.
Let's hear you.
Chief Jernigan, come on up. We'll take your card.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Chris Jernigan, and I proudly serve as the Vice President of the Glendale Firefighters Association Local 776, representing the men and women who protect this city 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm here today to speak in strong support of adopting a public safety development impact fee. This policy is not just fiscally responsible, it is essential for ensuring that our city grows, our public safety departments grow with it. Every time a new apartment complex goes up or a commercial development opens its doors, it increases the demand on our fire department, our police officers, our dispatchers, and our emergency medical system. More people means more 911 calls, more buildings mean more square footage to protect. And yet, without a development impact fee, these new projects place that increased burden on the backs of existing taxpayers without contributing their fair share. This type of fee is not a penalty, but rather a partnership. It ensures that developers who benefit tremendously from the opportunity to build and profit in our community contribute proportionally to the resources needed to keep that community safe. Nearly every neighboring city has already implemented this type of fee. We're not breaking new ground, we're just catching up. Projects such as the proposed 682-unit mixed-use development at the former Sears site on Central Avenue, the 340-unit affordable housing complex at 515 Pioneer Drive, and the 68-unit senior housing development at Parkview, Glendale, are just a few examples of the city's continued development and expansion, not to mention other developments we have supported. These developments, while beneficial in many respects, inevitably lead to increased demands on our public safety infrastructure. I want to emphasize, this isn't just about fire apparatus or patrol units. It's about response times, it's about firefighter staffing. It's about making sure that when someone calls 911, because their loved one isn't breathing, we have the personnel, equipment, and infrastructure to be there in seconds, not minutes. That's what this fee helps support. Implementing a public safety development impact fee ensures that developers contribute their fair share to the infrastructure that supports and protects their investments. This fee would provide essential funding for resources such as updated equipment, enhanced training programs, and potentially additional staffing, all of which are vital to maintaining our department's readiness and effectiveness. Members of the council, I have to share an important fact framed by the nearly 30 years I have spent helping to protect Glendale and its citizens. My first day in the Glendale Fire Academy was September 11, 1995. On this day, the daily on-duty staffing responding to 911 calls and actually delivering the service stood at 51 total members. Today, almost 30 years later, our daily on-duty staffing stands at 52. In this time, our call volume has gone from less than 10,000 a year to nearly 23,000 every single year. We are solidly well behind both our neighbors in firefighters per capita. And so if not now, when do we address how we are going to continue to promise to be one of the safest cities in the country to live, work, shop, and raise a family in if we're not providing enough resources to meet the mission? To finish up, this fee helps promote equitable growth. It ensures that the financial responsibility of expanding our public safety capabilities does not fall solely on existing residents, but is shared by those who are contributing to the city's growth. And so on behalf of our Glendale firefighters, the GPOA, and the community we're sworn to protect, I respectfully urge you to adopt a public safety development impact fee as part of this year's budget. Additionally, we express our support for any public benefit revenues that would continue to making Glendale a safe city for all. Thank you for your time, your service, and your continued commitment to keeping Glendale safe.
Thank you. Mr. Kusakian?
In terms of our, my comments?
Yeah.
For...
And I was reminded, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was reminded that in terms of all these taxes, it is really only likely that one of them be adopted by way of...
Ballot initiative.
Ballot measure, sure. So right off the bat, I would say that our, any increase in the sales tax would be prudent. We saw how Measure S provided tremendous financial benefit to the city because had we not preemptively, had the council at the time not pushed forward, and I commend those who had that foresight, the county would have come in, passed the measure, and the funds, as we've sat here and lamented, often would have gone to the county and not been available for local services and... available for local services and needs. It's very likely that, given the appetite of the county, that there may be another attempt to increase the sales tax. I can't right now think what would prompt that, but we've seen it happen before. So I would rather have those dollars stay in Glendale versus going to someone who then returns 1% of each dollar that we pay to the county in tax, that our residents, that those who do business in this city do. I do think that there is some value in exploring what potentially a vacancy tax could provide to the city. It's not always about cash flow. I know that Councilmember Garpetian, who has a background in real estate and works in this, was questioning the wisdom of someone keeping a property vacant for very long that they could collect rent on. I don't disagree, yet we do have properties around the city that have sat vacant, they're on some of our major thoroughfares for a long, long time. And, you know, I, I'm not an expert in real estate, so I don't know why they would, but, you know, just simple, I think, research and questionings provide us some answers that sometimes it's just about, you know, tax strategy or long-term value maximization. Sometimes in order to have a tenant going there, landlords may not want to accept a lower rent than what they were originally anticipating when they came up with the financials for the project. And by doing so, they perhaps will devalue their overall value of their property and impact their financial portfolio. Not something that I do, because the only property I own is my home, and I've said this before, we don't even own it. The bank owns it, and we pay them monthly for us to be able to stay there until it's paid off. But that is a reality. If we want our 25% roughly of our income to the city to provide the services comes from sales tax, if we have properties that are sitting vacant, we're not getting that revenue into the city. The other 25% is from property tax, so we have to be careful with how we implement strategies to fill those vacancies, but I think it's something that we should consider. All these others, sure, maybe only we have a shot at one of them, but I think we do have to have a conversation with the public. We have to have meetings with our stakeholders, whether they're homeowners groups, whether it's the business community, chambers of commerce, and have regular conversations about what we are looking at in terms of our realistic financial outlook for the city. We have a lot of people with a lot of demands on our purse. Residents, some of our employee associations, council projects, pet projects from council members, desires to improve certain our processes and the way we run our operations. All of those cost money, and we are running very low on that right now. So if there are ways to creatively raise revenues, I'm, I'm all for it. Again, my first choice would probably be the quarter cent sales tax.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm going to just be real brief here. I'm not opposed to the quarter cent sales tax. I will not speak to the business license tax due to a potential conflict. I will not speak to the parking tax due to a potential conflict. Transfer tax, I don't really like. Hotel tax, I do like. I was approached by someone at the last Contract Cities conference out of the blue and said, oh, you guys are way low, you should be bumping that to 14% for your hotel tax. Parcel tax, I'm very much against. I think anyone that owns a, owns a home, look at your tax bill. You're getting socked with GUSD tax, community college tax, water tax, mosquito tax, all those things. And I don't think that that fairly, that that imposition of the financial burden is equitably distributed throughout the community. Commercial vacancy tax, I don't know, I do have problems with, I guess, the property rights issue involved in that. And should I keep going? Delay closure of Shoal landfill? Hmm, I know I voted for that. I may bring that up to, to see if we can reopen that again. Parking fees, I'm in favor of the parking fees increase. Public safety impact, yes, I think that makes a lot of sense. Concierge fee is minor revenues. Digital billboards, I'm okay with those. Restaurants in the park and all these others are a little bit too nebulous at this point to get into deeply. Ground leasing of city property, I think fair market value adjustments are okay with me.
Here, I do want to say that I do support parking fee increases as well.
All right, very good. Councilmember Asatirian.
I'll just read off, yes, and however fast we can do for the sales tax so we can keep our dollars. I would say no to the business tax, yes to the parking tax, no to the transfer tax, yes to the hotel tax, no to the parcel tax, yes to the commercial vacancy tax. I think some of the concerns that Mr. Garpetian raised can be brought forth during the report. And then the EV chargers and public right-of-way, yes, and I think we're overdue for that. And I would love to see some actual, I don't know what investments we're going to be making through our budget from the city. Maybe we cut down on those and do a public-private partnership, which saves us money but also makes us money. I've been a big proponent of that. I'm okay with the parking fees. Public safety impact fee is something that I brought up, obviously I'm supporting it. Yes to the concierge fee. The digital billboards is a yes. I do want to note that aside from the city, I want to make sure that this item also comes back with all public lands. I know that Metro had submitted something to us about, I guess, a year and a half ago at this point, and it's, it's kind of been sitting there. And then, yes to all the other revenues that you have. I recognize that you've put "to be determined," Mr. Calvert, next to some of these. I would really like to see some of these, I recognize there's only so much information that you can give us, like the existing leases and whatnot at this point, but even, for example, the ice skating rink, just running past Dina's one sheet and them generating about a million dollars in revenue last year. And then looking at Pickwick, these are like easy estimates that we can get, that can be part of the discussion at the next meeting. I think the digital kiosks, you also have some proposals that were provided to you. And then I think the restaurants in the park was also my idea, but, you know, having a, putting out an RFP and seeing what we get there, I think is just a public benefit along with generating some revenue. And I said this, I think, during the first session, if we are talking about cutting a $45,000 flag program, then there's no revenue source, that's too little to be considering at this point.
Mr. Rothman.
Okay. I'll say, I don't like any of these taxes, but I think we need to consider them, given our structural deficit in the future years. So the quarter cent sales tax, it makes the most sense that that be brought forward for 2026, and I support that. But I do think we need to consider certainly a parking tax, and I think a business license tax. We're an outlier. I don't think any of our neighboring cities are like us without a business license tax. So maybe those are for future years, but I think we should consider them seriously. And on the commercial vacancy, I would like to just study whether there is an issue with commercial vacancies before we decide whether we want to move forward or something like that. I just know that up in Montrose, we've heard complaints from the MS, Montrose Shopping Park Association about storefronts that have been vacant for a very, very long time. And I don't understand why that would be the case.
Councilmember Rothman, did you have any opinions or comments on parking tax, transfer tax?
Yes, I said yes to the parking tax. I would like to explore that. I'm just saying I don't know that we can do them all at once, but that is something I would, I think makes sense. Business license tax, I said makes sense. And then I moved on to the commercial vacancy, just, I would like to understand whether that's an issue beyond the few locations on Honolulu, and I would like to understand why those locations have been vacant for so long. I would not be in favor of reopening the question of the fill level at Shoal Canyon landfill. EV chargers and public right-of-way, if there's a business opportunity, if there's actually an opportunity to generate revenue, then I'd like to look at that. I support the parking fee increase. I support a public safety impact fee. I support a concierge fee. If that, I think that wouldn't be a net gain to us, that would just be funding our ability to provide a concierge service, which I think we should enhance that service and charge for it. Digital billboards, yes, on the freeway, I'm not sure I really want them elsewhere. And then transfer of city development rights, I think we should definitely look at that. I'm very much in support of that. I'm in support of renegotiating any existing leases. And the ground leasing of city property, I think it's a crime that we have these vacant lots south of the church on Mountain and North, or I should say just south of the civic auditorium, these two large spaces. Given our housing shortage, it's a crime that they're just, they're just sitting there vacant. So I think that's an obvious one, we can provide for housing and we can generate revenue. That's, that's it for me.
Thank you. I have to leave, but if you'd like to make closing comments, that would be fine. Mr. Kasakian is the pro tem.
Sure, I'll make some very, very quick comments here. Thank you for your time today. I know it was a lot of information to take. We'll be available to answer any questions in the next week as things come to mind. One of the things that we thought we may or may not get through at the end of today was kind of the next steps and maybe seeking some council direction. Clearly, we're not going to ask for this information today, but at the end of next week, or at some point at, during our next budget, next and final budget study session, we're going to have to come to terms with the situation that we're faced with. And we're going to have to determine, get some council direction in terms of how we should begin preparing the final budget for budget presentation at the hearing and adoption. As it is, there's a number of different avenues that we can take. The last one is really a, an open-ended opportunity for council to use any combination of things or things that haven't been discussed at this point. But regardless, we do face a significant deficit. We've made one-year adjustments, deferrals, cancellations to deal with the 25-26 budget, which has brought it down to 13.7 million dollars. The question is, for 25-26, are we going to adopt it with that kind of a gap? Are we going to adopt it with a larger gap by putting certain things back into the budget? Are we going to get direction to go back and cut more out of the budget? Regardless of what we do in 25-26, unless those things carry over into future years, we're still facing 30-plus million dollar deficits in 26-27 and beyond. So I just wanted to leave that as the final parting thoughts today. Again, thank you for your time, and we'll see you here next Thursday.
Great. Comments, Councilmember Asatirian?
Just one comment. We asked staff to dump all the files that were emailed to us from each of the sessions into a OneDrive folder and just share it, so we're not searching through emails and things are just organized for budget session.
We'll do that by the end of today.
You and Councilmember Garpetian?
Yeah, there's a commercial property vacancies, when you bring this idea back, separate the properties, because it's a very wide statement, commercial properties. There's office buildings, retail, industrial, or what have you. Retail vacancy is less than 1%, office building vacancy almost doesn't exist, but, I mean, industrial doesn't exist, but the office buildings are hurting if you want to charge them vacancy, because they're not keeping it vacant on purpose. So it's market dictates these vacancies 99.9% of the time. So with that, make sure you separate them when you bring these buildings back.
All right. Any other comments?
Did you need revotes on any of these things? Or, all right, thank you.
All right, with that, we'll have a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Thank you.